Make sure it's a good video, a good start to the video. I'm not gonna make any quick motions or smiles or media media come to order. It is being videotaped for replay on Dayton's cable, Dayton cable on the YouTube, Titan YouTube channel under the authority of the governor's executive action allowing public meetings to take place via virtual videotape. First item would be to approval of the minutes of the May 5th, May 5th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion, hearing none all is in favor, all those opposed, the ayes have it. Correspondents, Mallory, there was no transfers that was submitted between now and Tuesday, right, that you saw? No old business, new business, continued discussion of the proposed FY21 budget. First on the agenda tonight is Bristol Plymouth. And Alex, I'll give you our, my regular, welcome to you and Nadine to our meeting. We, we're still preliminarily going through the budgets. We will hopefully by the end of tonight start to get to some recommendations. We, we sit at a point where we are over the levy limit based on departmental requests. But hopefully by the end of tonight or Tuesday night, we will have a finalized recommended budget. Obviously, there is a lot up in the air, a lot of unknowns that I'm sure you guys are going through the same. Who knows where this is truly gonna shake out? Who knows how town meeting is gonna take place? How funding mechanisms are going to begin, how budgets are going to get approved? We, it, it, there's a lot unknown, but we're gonna continue in the same fashion that we do every year. We have putting some assumptions in place that will, there will be some cuts on the, on the town side to local aid. There will be some reduction in local revenue. We'll be very conservative in our revenue projections. But as Mallory put about a month ago, maybe now, that municipalities tend to lag behind all of that. And we're going to try and be as much in front of it as we can. So six months from now, we're not caught with something that we can't control. The good thing for us is we sit in a good financial position going in because of a lot of the things we've done over time. So, but it, it, it is a struggle to get to a, a full budget and know exactly what things are gonna shake out. So, welcome. You just wanna touch on the request because your request is actually a significant increase to us this year versus last year. So if you just wanna touch, I mean, it's obviously, we have many more students going to Bristol Plymouth than we did in the past. And so I'll turn it over to you and Nadine, and thanks for joining us. We appreciate it.
I'm not sure if everyone has the, the budget that was sent to you, the, but I will go over it anyway. But it isn't
Do you wanna share the screen? One second, Alex Mallory, do you wanna share the budget screen?
If you like, yeah, sure.
Mallory can, Mallory can share it on the screen so everybody can see what you're talking about.
What he's gonna provide, I need two seconds to pull that up. Are you gonna do the little report about five stages or so?
Yeah, yep. Okay, so I'm just gonna grab that and then I'll share the screen.
All right, great.
Why, why does she have a screen? Let me just, just say that, you know, the budget that we, again, these are, these are from the governor's numbers. As you had mentioned, we're gonna go, we, we said the same thing. We're just gonna go with the same budget that was offered to us. The, the budget debt is being proposed is also a state minimum contribution. So there is no additional assessment besides the, you know, the assessment of transportation as well as capital assessment. But, but the capital assessment hasn't changed and transportation is, is what it is. And therefore, so if we look at, if you go to page one, thank you. If you go a little further up, you can see that our increase is, our budget increases a 4.7%. It was last year's, from last year, 24,986,405 to this year being 26,164,241, which brings us to a four point, overall 4.7% increase. We move on to the next page. Can you move to page, even go to page? Page three, we, we, can we go to page three? Because we'll go right to the here, here the numbers, here's your numbers, the assessment of one of, I can't see it too well either.
821.
821. So I'm looking at the wrong one. Am I looking at the right page?
It's right there on the screen, 821-280.
Yes, yes. I was looking, I'm sorry, I was looking at the F21. So the, here's your total, yeah, there is an increase. And one of the reasons there's an increase, you, you did have nine students more than last year. So that, that brought the number up higher and you could see from, you know, your member community is about 6.3% of you know, of pupils is, is your number and which is 6.6% minimum contribution to the, to the budget according to the state. If we move to next page.
So, so Alex, are you guys at max capacity on students?
Well, yeah, we're pretty, we're pretty much at max. I mean, you know, there, there are times we can take one or two here, there. Because of sometimes we, what will happen is some students and sophomore you will leave and we can bring in and it depended on what shop. But after 10th grade, we can't bring anybody in because you know, that's, it is what it is. We have noticed a little bit, I will say, Ed, we have noticed a drop in middle borough students. And I think one of the reasons they have a new building, new beautiful school coming in, which may be one of the reasons why some students are now choosing to go there. We, we have saw, we have seen a drop in middle borough students. But we also have seen a, an increase with in Dayton and Rehoboth students, you know, last, which, you know, so, you know, and as far as applications go, not, not, you know, so therefore there's a, there's more students.
Have you, did you guys meet with Rehoboth yet?
We have not met with Rehoboth.
No.
Never?
We haven't yet.
Yeah, because I mean, that's, it's pretty, when you start to look at the number of kids that are leaving our regional school district, it's staggering between, you know, if you look at, you know, they had 16 more students, we had, it's 25 kids. We're between the two communities, it's 130, 140 kids now that have left the district. The high, just so you know, the high school population at, and Peter, correct me, because you gave me these numbers the other day, was what, down to seven? Went from 893 down to
Yeah.
In the last three years.
I'll be honest with you, I, you know, Rehoboth numbers were always much slower. And I, I, I was quite surprised how, how many students from Rehoboth are, you know, also applying. And, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's 85 students from Dayton, that's significant based on our size of our student population.
It's because we're so great at BP.
High schools. You know, if you look at the two schools also, Ed, you know, they went to Berkeley is one that's gone down. And one of the reasons why Berkeley started going down too is because they had Somerset, Berkeley. You know, sometimes parents are, you know, are seeing, you know, a, a new school or kids following a new school and, you know, it, it'll, it'll what we've seen in the past, it'll, and that, this happened with Bridgewater, Rainham for a while. And then it comes, it's coming back, you know what I mean? But, but you know, when they have something nice and shiny.
Did, what did, what did you see when, when Totten moved their eighth grade to the high school? Did you see, did you see a drop from the top?
Yeah, absolutely was.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Alex, your total budget is 24 million?
Our total budget is
And then the, the capital assessment, is that a, is that a specific project or is that you guys building a capital stabilization account?
That's, that's what we build out to build our, you know, keep our place going. It's been at 250 now for some time as well and, and to, you know, keep up with the building.
And we just had a feasibility study, just so you know, it was, it's about $1.2 million and we didn't have to come to the towns to get any of that money because, you know, we had that money reserved for that.
What, what do you anticipate the next major capital project will be?
Well, we have, we have, you know, a new building project. Right now we have the feasibility going on and, you know, they're, they're doing all the, and, and, you know, surely we'll, we'll start meeting with, with our towns and, and local officials to bring them at the par to what, what the findings are and where we're going. We, we're never, you know, we're in the pipeline for an MSBA project.
Thanks. Can you wait till we pay off Bristol Aggie first?
Yeah, Bristol Aggie, Bristol Aggie surprised you guys from my understanding. I, you know, we've been going on with this for some time.
But just remember
Positive, you go down to 11 students over there, so it's very minimal.
Right, and you're just one of seven town member communities, so you gotta look at it that you're just one of those member communities.
Yeah, but if our enrollment keeps going up, then our portion of that one of seven becomes very much more significant than it is in general.
It does, but we're getting, you know, the reimbursement rate is at 57% from the state. You know, so that's 57% of free money that I look at and that difference is broken up between seven member communities. I, I, it's no, it's, it's kind of
Yeah, but I haven't, I haven't seen a school building project that's less than $100 million in, in quite a while.
Oh, I, I know.
So $43 million between seven communities when it's still a significant borrowing piece when you're, when, when you're the size that we are. So when you, especially when we have our own building projects that, you know, now we're paying for three different school systems building projects versus, you know, just one, so.
Right.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and that, that is concerning to me too. And that was one of the things we had talked about the MSBA, which is, you know, unfair, like, you know, middle bar is the same row, in the same boat, you know, there, if, you know, and Tyn has school projects going on as well. So
Right.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah, but we, you, you have to do what's right though, so.
Well, I was gonna say, my, my hope is hopefully the investment that you, you know, that's, with the kids, they go back and return the investment back to the community and, you know, are good citizens and that pay the taxes and maybe even have businesses in the, in your community that contribute.
Yep.
And I, I will say, like I said to other communities before, we are a vocational school. Although we have our students that go to college, but mo-most of the times they're at local colleges, they come back to the communities. And vocational students, they, they pick up trades, they tend to be, you know, close to the community, if not in the, in town, they'll, they, you know, most likely they'll be in, in the surrounding town and, and contribute to your, your community as well. So it is our hope that it continues that way.
Anyone else, anyone have any questions?
I understand that your reimbursement rate from MSB is 57%.
It's 57.76, I think.
Nadine, that hasn't really been, that hasn't really been established until
No, those rates are posted as far as that's the, the rate that they have provided to us in our documentation. But we haven't set, we haven't signed any documents yet to establish going forward with any kind of amounts. We're just in feasibility stage. So right now we're just finding out, they have to determine what it would cost to renovate our school, what it would cost to build a new school, and what would, it would cost to just do a repair. So they have three different studies that they have to complete before any kind of determination would come forward for cost.
Okay, because the Aggie is right around 50%. So your rate is, you know, if they, if they actually give you that rate, that's, that's pretty good.
We got to try to get it up to 60 with some of the little things that we got going. You know, some of, you know, how we maintain, because they give you points of how, how well you maintain your building. So they had some other points that 57. And, and it's my goal, we're trying to get to as far, as close to the 60 as we can. And there's some legislative action to go back to some other numbers that are better for us, if, if you will, with the free reduced lunch type of deal. So we're hoping to get it a little higher, but right now 57 is, you know, what they're talking about, but we're trying to get it to a little higher on the, on the percentage. Well, we're also talking, you know, and, and you'll be getting something soon, you know, we've been talking to our what was it, the PMA, our to set up a meeting to all the towns, like you, we did that too long ago when we first, before we went into the feasibility, we brought all the towns, explained where we're going and, and so forth. So we're hoping to do that fairly soon, you know, just to give folks heads up on what's, what's been happening.
This is your first major project since the school was built, isn't it?
No, we had projects earlier, 2000, 2001. It was about an $8 million project.
Okay.
You had a major roof project too, right?
No, that was like, that was, no, that was long, that was about the same time they did the
Yeah, that was even prior to Dayton joining. Both of those were prior to Dayton joining, rejoining the district.
Must have been when I was in Totten.
Yeah, yeah. We, we've done a lot of projects in the building to, to, you know, to try to grab space, but we've done a lot of that stuff on our own with our own folks, our, our teaching staff, our students, in order to reserve costs for the towns. And we never, you know, assess the towns any additional cost because we were always doing it on our own. And so, you know, we, the buildings maintained, building's not a bad building in a sense. It's just where a lot of wear and tear, there's a lot of infrastructure that, you know, that for one, doesn't even have a sprinkler system. And then number two, you know, the, the electrical is old and, and so forth. So there's some collapsing going on in the floors and so forth, so, but that'll have, that'll be all part of the, you know, the, what they're doing now assessing the building and that we communicated.
All right. Well, um, thank you guys for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
And reviewing it, we appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for what you do for the kids.
Well, thank you for having us. And, you know, again, we'll, we'll do the best we can with what we have and we'll, we'll stay in touch if anything else changes.
Yep, and so will we, so will we. Be well and be safe. Anyone else have any questions before they leave? Good, good. Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe, everybody. Take care. Bye bye. Good night.
Night, night.
All right, so next up is just a quick continuation of the regional school district budget. Just from, from my end, just as an FYI, I did look and they, so I finally got the answer. They are splitting that based on the percentage of the budgets. And then at the high school, it's on student population. So it's been, the student, the budget at the high school is split, assessment is split on student population. And then it is based on the percentage of the K through eight budgets. You know, the answer I tried to get out of them the other night that they didn't have. Granted, I was looking at the numbers a little bit wrong. That's why I was a little adamant with, that it was an over assessment. But that number, that number is right to, they were using the same number, is the same method they used last year. Even though Mr. Kitchen didn't, said it was not the statutory method, it technically was the same method we've used for the last three years.
Thank you.
They have requested a, a discussion with Mallory and I for tomorrow morning between nine and 10, and I'll report back to the committee where that goes. You know what it is? It's really the meeting that should have taken place, placed back in maybe February. When we talk about the preliminary discussion that we've done every year for, up until the last two or three. So just as an FYI, the, the text message that the superintendent refers to, that he sent to me asked, and he says, well, I texted it and he said he wasn't ready to discuss it, was in January, the day after the governor's budget came out. So it was not at the normal time that we have any kind of discussion. And that is the last communication I received from him, asking us any preliminary budget information, so. Does anyone have any questions on that? No, nothing? Scott, you got nothing for me?
I said my piece the other day. I can't say anymore.
I, I will tell you, I, I got 15 text messages from the superintendent afterwards. Questioning me and questioning what some of our motives were and, but we just wanna be treated as an equal partner, not a, a secondary go-between. We know we're gonna do what's right for the kids at the end of the day like we always do. But let's be, be honest and upfront with us. So I will bring back what the message comes from tomorrow. Before we finalize what we're going to recommend. I know, based on looking at our preliminaries, and we'll talk more about it when we get to the end of getting through the rest of them. But I, I, I don't feel comfortable with the number that they've proposed right now, that we, we, we're gonna have the ability to fund it at that level. So, but we'll talk about it as we get closer to it and they'll, but we'll, I'll have, we'll have that frank discussion with them tomorrow as I tried to do the other night and tell them that I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna be comfortable when we look at, there's 85 students now at BP that's costing us almost a million dollars to send kids out of the district. You know, what are they doing to address that? When they, you know, Peter shared with me that he looked at the three-year trend on numbers at the high school. Three years ago, I started the conversation of, what are you guys gonna do to fill the high school and make it more efficient for us? Maybe bring the eighth grade to the high school. Well, that's a taboo topic, nobody wants to have. But now you, now you're down another 110 students from where you were three years ago. And maybe if you had brought the eighth grade up to the high school two years ago, you'd only be down 50 students because kids get comfortable and they don't leave. Now you, you've given them all sorts of opportunities to go other places, so that's my two cents. Anyone have anything else they wanna add?
I will just comment that when you have declining enrollment, for whatever reason, why do you have the same number of staff members? If classes that, obviously you want classes that are conducive to learning, I mean, size. But if you start losing kids everywhere, at what point do you start looking to combine classes to, to provide the education? But as I say, been there, done that, we, 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 there was a time when we had declining enrollment. Then all of a sudden, it just went kapoom and that's when Berkeley was asked to leave. But I was surprised at those numbers when I look at how many kids from Dayton and Rehoboth are at BP. I didn't realize it had increased that much.
Yeah, 85 kids is a lot. When 85 just from Dayton, I think that's probably 20 to 25% of our eighth, of our, it's at least 20% of our middle school.
Twenty, 22% of the Dayton high school age kids.
Yeah. Right, because we have like, what, 300?
325.
Yep.
Hey, Ed, when they had the public hearing, like, I didn't go to this one, but I've been there in the past, they talk about if they're making changes in the number of positions. I heard them say that they aren't going to have some kind of teaching aid or something, or something at the schools, but I think that was lower grades. But what about, were there any positions mentioned, like, we're going to have one less, I don't know, English teacher, but we need a geography teacher or a social studies. Did they talk about anything like that?
The Zoom meeting that I was on that night, and I think Brett, you were there also, they didn't get into the detail by school, what they were eliminating the way they did in the past. They basically went over the number and the assessment and, you know, there was probably, there's the big packet. And then Kathy and George got into an argument about all the kids that were leaving and it's the, you know, because you guys aren't funding the school and the chaos that is created at the school, that's why all the kids are leaving. That was basically what the biggest discussion point at the, at the public hearing was.
I would say it's like, kind of, it's unstable. I mean, as a parent, it, it's a little off-putting and unsettling. And then we have right in our backyard two very capable schools in Bristol Aggie and BP. So their success works against the district.
And, and the other thing is, you know, I don't know if Pete would said it to me when we talked the other day was, they, or someone said the BP and Bristol Aggie start talking to the kids in sixth grade to say, hey, look at what we got. When you get to eighth grade, when you just have to make your decision where you wanna go to high school, they have already had tours, they've already know about the school, they know about their choices. The regional school district doesn't talk to the kids until the middle of eighth grade and say, hey, here's a tour of the high school. This is what you got to look forward to next year. Instead of prepping them onto what, what, what is there, what can they do? Getting kids involved in activities before they get to the high school. There, there's not a lot of that that's done. BP runs
BP also has something like a summer orientation program. Come and check us out, spend a week at BP and see that. But I will also tell you, both Aggie and BP have had info tables at the couch hip because they've been right next to me with my stormwater. So they're giving out, you know, trinkets, but they're also giving out brochures and information. It, there's really quite an outreach. Don't remember if both schools were there last year, but I know in the past, both schools have been there. Usually on Saturday.
So, all right, so that's it on the screen. Any, any other points of interest on the schools? All right, moving on to library, Jocelyn, welcome.
Hi.
Hope you are doing well and being safe.
Yeah, we're giving the best we can.
Okay, all right. It is, I have the right budget number, it is budget 610?
Yes.
So do you just wanna touch on the highlights of your, of your budget? Jocelyn, since you heard my speech at the beginning about how we're handling COVID and trying to manage our way through it?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I guess. We, I had put in anticipated contractual increases. I don't know how that's going. I, by Stewie, I have professional and technical line is the sales assessment that went out a little bit. I, is it, I tried to keep it as reasonable as possible.
So Mallory or the selectman, do you just wanna talk about the librarian salary line? Because Jocelyn's request is different than what the board of selection have recommended.
Yeah, I can speak on that. The clerical contract is still open. So we would probably not have any pieces this time until that's resolved. Probably at a special town meeting in the fall, we can address that. But we have in the past, in these different budgets, we have not been increasing the clerical staff because we haven't resolved that contract. Mallory, you, you want to add to that, please?
I was just gonna say that you recommended I was just going to say that you recommended a 2% increase for the library director.
Can't hear you, Mallory. Yeah, Mallory.
Ah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. The Selectmen had, what did I say? The Selectmen voted a 2% increase, they recommended a 2% increase for the library director position, as it falls in line with the other department heads. And that salary is officially set by the Board of Library Trustees. The clerical union, I had trouble hearing Ken, but I think he was saying that the clerical union contract hadn't been resolved yet. So their recommendations reflect, you know, just a level fund there. And then again, there's not much into this. Say it again, Jocelyn?
Is that the only change?
Right, it's not even really a change, it's just their recommendations. So they've just lowered a couple of those lines based upon salaries. Everything else was left level funded, all of your expenses. The real bulk here is your library materials, which, you know, you have to spend to keep the sales credit, excuse me, sales accreditation and all of that. So it's a pretty straightforward budget, I'd say. We didn't have too much discussion on it.
Alright.
Mallory, the clerical would only apply to 5106?
5106, yes. Page is not the salary for the page, that's a non-union position. And I don't know what's happening here with the 60, oh no, yes I do, I'm sorry. I need a cup of coffee, I think.
So, Jocelyn, do you just want to share with us why the departmental request, or was that the trustees put in the higher rate for your salary? And I know it's always tough to talk about your own salary when you get in front of the group like this, versus what the Board of Selectmen recommended? So we can have a balance to that when we talk about it? Because they changed it from a 3.64 increase to a 2% increase?
I think it was intended to be 2%, actually.
Oh, okay.
So there's nothing really to discuss?
Okay, okay.
The note at the end says something about an education incentive?
Oh, yeah. I don't know how that works. Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Roach. What is the level? Is it that specific, Jocelyn?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's 1,200. Okay, we need to...
Can I have a question about...
That's usually rolled into the hourly rate?
Yeah.
That might account for that 3.6.
Yeah. Do you have a point you'd like to make?
Yeah, my understanding was that it was the 2% anticipated increase, and then the education incentive. So that's why it was higher than the normal standard across the board this fiscal year, 2%.
Right, right.
So the departmental request should be what we're looking at, that meets what was intended, not what the Board of Selectmen and TA recommendation is.
Right, and I think Chris Labilett, I'm going to have you verify what the, with your, Chris Labilett's put a worksheet together for every employee, which has proved incredibly helpful. If we could add the $1,200, and you don't have to do that now, but we'll verify that for the committee and update, we'll make a little updated note.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll hold that recommended budget until Tuesday. Because I'm hoping to get through some recommendations tonight, and hold some, and the ones that we may have questions on, we'll hold until Tuesday night. Any other questions on the library? So, Jocelyn, I'm assuming that you and the rest of the library trustees and Mallory and the Selectmen are working on what kind of plan we can have coming out of COVID, because I'm sure the library would... That's okay with the space constraints you have in that building is going to be very difficult in the short term to open back up. So we look forward to hopefully having a plan that we can utilize the library's resources as we come out of...
We have some ideas. We have a task force that is meeting with each department, and the library is on the priority list, meaning quicker schedule upfront.
So, anyone else have any questions on the library? Thanks, Jocelyn. Be safe, be well.
Thank you all. I hope you all stay safe, too.
Thank you.
Good night, Jocelyn.
Good night.
Hey, so he's joining the meeting tonight.
Hey, Kevin, it's Kevin, it's your favorite.
Budget.
Hi Brett, hi Brett. It's always hi Brett. I need coal. I like coal better than you, Kevin.
That's terrible. That's terrible, Ed. Poor kid.
I always had a favorite kid in my household, too.
I like the red hair.
Me too.
I liked coal before, because coal would always be in my car.
No, I like you, Kevin. You're funny. Thank you. But you like Brett, though.
What about everybody else?
What about everybody?
So is the town clerk on here? Sue, are you on here?
I'm here.
Hi Sue, how are you?
I'm Adam Clark.
Hi, everyone.
We miss seeing your smiling face.
I know, I do.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I miss you guys also.
That was the ice cream cake.
It was good. It was very lonely, but it was good. Yeah, he had the whole ice cream cake to himself. I think he was okay.
I'm sure he was. So Sue, sounds like you're in for a very interesting election season.
Oh my God. I'm almost afraid to go into my emails every five minutes, because every time I look, there's something different out there. It's just mind-boggling, mind, mind-boggling. And Secretary of State Galvin just needs to go on vacation or something. Oh my God. He, I know he means well, but there's just, they don't think about how this affects the clerks. You know, I mean, you, doesn't mean, I mean, they're out there and they're just about in tears, you know, like, one poor girl has an election on May 26th. She did 600 early voting ballots this week, and she's working, they're alternating, she's working from home, because she had a good point. She says, "If her and her assistant both get sick, who's going to run these elections?" So they're trying not to be in the office at the same time, something like Pam and I have been doing also, but if both of us were to get sick, you know, it's an issue, it's an issue. And I know they mean well, but they're really looking at doing a lot, a lot of more early voting, and not just by mail. I mean, now they're looking at the primary. I did not budget for this. I did budget for the two weeks of early voting in November, but I did not know about, there was not supposed to be any early voting in September for the primary. I still don't know why you're doing that. I think it should just be by mail. Early voting by mail, I don't think we need to spend that kind of money, but whatever. So that's, at the legislature right now, they'll probably pass. You know, there's so much out there, there's just so much out there, and it just changes daily. No different than what, you know, everybody else is going through, I guess. But you've just got to stay on top of it, you know, and that's what we're trying to do, you know? So, but, so that being said, my election account, it might come, well, when we go to town meeting, fall town meeting, actually, that'll be after the September election. I might have to do something at that point to, for my, like, my, probably my professional and technical line, maybe even my, depending what they decide. I might have to up the election workers and the police. So I don't know, I really don't know. At this point, I really don't know. I know what's supposed to be happening in November, and that's budgeted. I just don't know about September, you know?
So you believe you have enough in this budget to get through the presidential election?
I do. I budgeted for the election and the two weeks of early voting. So, yes, yes.
You have, but you have extra in there, because you have next people who's already budgeted in there, too. So you could tap into that if you had to, before we go back to the fall. Okay.
Right. So this, so what will happen is, you know, come September, November, September will be using some of November's money, and then, you know, November will be using some of town meeting, town election money from April. So at some point, I'm either going to have to put a line on a special town meeting warrant, or do a transfer. I'm not sure, you know, I really don't know.
Understood. So that is budget number 162?
That is correct. You know, as you can see, I went down on that, on the professional and technical line. You know, I try to level fund, but the only one I can't level fund usually is my postage, you know, because of postage and of, excuse me, the election one. The election one is like every other year. So next year, my budget will be less, because it's only two elections, you know, versus, it'll be only one election, I'm sorry, it'll be one election versus three. So, but I did lower that professional and technical, because I really thought, you know, I didn't need as much as I budgeted this year, but then again, I don't know. I don't know. So, but for now, I think it's okay. I think it's okay. I think if I leave it the way it is, it's okay. I, so as you can see, I did, I kind of level funded the clerical, the salary clerical, but on the election workers, I have to go up, because you're talking three elections versus one this year, this fiscal year, and then of course, the police officers, so.
Okay.
And with the issue with the school, I've, you know, because of everything that's been going on about the elections at the school, I have been using an extra police officer. So, you know, upped it a little bit, but I think that line is fine. I think I level funded on communications, and then I went down a little bit on the office supplies. So, that's one, that's that one.
Okay, so 161, the town clerk's budget?
161, yep.
Yep. So I'm assuming on 5155, it's because you don't anticipate anyone is actually going to retire or leave this year, that you have no sick time buybacks, right?
Uh, no, and this year, actually, the money I did budget for this year, the 3,500, that was for Pam, that was for her sick time buyback. She, because of the change in the contract, she will not be buying that money back this year. Every year she buys back over, like, anywhere between 29 to, you know, over 3,000. But because she didn't hit that number of hours, so that money will go into free cash or whatever. So, that money will be extra that I have in that budget line this year.
Yeah, so you don't anticipate you'll need anything in FY21?
Nope, I think I'm good. I mean, unless anything else comes up crazy that I don't know about, you know, between now and next June, I don't know, you know, a week, a year from June, whatever. No, I think I'm good, that's why I level funded. You know, I kind of level funded everything.
That line has no requested money for 21. So that line has no requested money for 21.
On the personnel expenses?
The benefits sick time buyback has no request for FY21.
No, no.
Okay.
No. And like I mentioned, that money from this year, the 3,500 from this year, will not be used.
Okay.
And then the salaries was the 2%.
Yep.
For all three, myself, Pam, and Becky. Becky is my, the clerk I have for 10 hours a week. So it was all, that went down a little bit, because Christina was in that position, and Christina was at a higher step, so that's why the difference between that, well, it's only like $91, but...
Okay.
And then, on the registration one, I did come down about $100 on the street listing, because this year, they all, it was supposed to be like, excuse me, I thought it was going to be around, it's always been around $900 in that area, but they only charged me $712 this year, so I did come down 100 bucks on that one. And I did have to go up 1,000 on the postage, because it's just been crazy with the postage. I'm kind of glad I did, because with these early, these early ballots that are going out, they're like 85 cents each, doesn't sound like a lot, but the times that come to presidential election, we had over 4,000 people vote in 2016. If we send out, let's say, 2,000 ballots, early, 200 go by mail at 85 cents, if you do the math real quick, that's like, you know, $1,700 or something. So I could be in a little, I could have a little problem with that line.
Do you, so do you anticipate that there'll be a much larger mailing ballot than buck-up ballot?
Oh, I do. Oh, I do, I do. Because the thing is, when we do the early voting at the town hall, we do it downstairs, it's tight. If they're still talking about, you know, I have, maybe by then, we won't, but there, you hear so many conflicting, different things. You know, it's going to have another surge come the fall, so are we still going to be doing a six feet, you know? There's no way I can put people six feet apart downstairs. So that's another thing I have to think about, and talk with Mallory.
I would anticipate that we may have to do early voting at the old town hall.
Thank you.
Well, we could probably do early voting there. My only dilemma with there is, because it's done every day for two weeks, I don't have a vault. I don't have anywhere, everything would have to keep come and go, you know what I mean? It's a little more, because everything has to be locked up in the vault. So the main, you know, police officer, and him more, but something we have to look at, maybe. I don't know, I just don't know. I do, I really expect that, maybe not 50%, I would go as high as maybe 30% of the people will vote by ballot come November. I really think so.
Okay. Any questions on the town clerk, the three budgets that she's responsible for? Anybody?
Just a, just a, I guess more of an accounting question. So the 163, the postage there can pay for election expenses?
Yep, well, that pays, that pays for some of it. That's my registration, that's what most... So what will come out of there is my census, when I do census, my second mailing and stuff like that, that's what gets paid out of there. But after May 1st, if I'm, I'm a clerk on my election side, if I'm low on postage, I can go there and grab it.
After, after May 1st, okay.
Yeah, after May 1st. But, you know, as you can see, this, excuse me, already remaining budget, but I haven't done the second mailing on the census yet, and I haven't done the postcards on the census yet. So that's going to eat up that 2,200 that's remaining in that budget line. So I just, it, I don't know, it's just weird, because with the census, it also goes by, you know, how many households, you know, I know the trend's been a little less, but for a couple of years there, the houses were going up like crazy in Dayton. So that was really shifting, you know, more census records going out and that type of thing. So I just, I just feel more comfortable adding another $1,000 there just for the postage.
Any more questions, comments? Selectmen? Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome. Guys, have a safe night and be safe.
Yeah, you got, you too.
Alright, thank you. Good night.
Good night, Sue.
Night. Thank you.
Thanks. It's the, I was still a little bit early for the treasurer.
He said she was gonna call in, and, um, I haven't seen her phone number pop up.
Okay. Well, once, we are running five minutes early.
Board of Health is here, right?
Uh, Tom's here. It keeps popping, the picture keeps popping in and out. So, let's, let's jump down to the Board of Health. Tom, are you with us?
I'm here, yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Want to see me, I'll put the video on.
Yeah, so that's budget number... Oh, hi, Tom.
510, 510.
510.
And 519.
What do you wanna do first?
And they also have sanitation.
Yep.
Do you wanna do sanitation first?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do 433 for us, which is waste collection and disposal.
Okay.
That's the first one I came upon.
Okay. Most of this is all contractual. Matter of fact, probably 95% of it. The only thing we, um, we did put in was the, uh, an extra 500 for overtime and additional hours because we're at the present, we only have one attendant. And we plan in the future on using a, uh, senior workup person, but I don't know how that's gonna work out, so. Um, but all we did, we increased that one by 500.
So, uh, Tom, on rubbish collection and recycling, are those hard numbers or those finalized numbers or?
They're not finalized number. We gave, we gave everything pretty much 3%, which is all they can increase it by. Board just is hard numbers, uh, rubbish collection, recycling collection, he's on a contract. The only one that's really not hard numbers is CMAS, uh, 5294.
Yep.
Uh, that's the only one because we don't have those numbers yet. Uh, but we did give it a 3%, so it could be less.
So, but, so it's contractual. Is, is this a new contract here on recycling? Because I wouldn't, thought we would have agreed to a 37% increase. So, it's a new contract?
Yeah, well, yes, it is. He was actually, uh, he was the lowest bidder out of the ones that we had, so.
So, we actually went out to bid on that contract?
He was, he was a million, it was a million, his, the separation between him and the next ty, next lowest was a million dollars. So, uh, the Board of Health went out to bid on quite a few, um, tried, tried a few of their contracts and did what they could to save some money. We, we got a little fancy, uh, with some procurement stuff. But yeah, this was a, this was a bid out project. One of the major things, and we should say this, Tom, one of the major issues we're gonna face relatively soon is that we don't have, um, the type of trash barrels that work with automated, um, machines. So, it's something to be aware of, that eventually, we're gonna have to rectify that.
Yeah, and what we're also thinking about, uh, this is just a big stage of, uh, bringing your resources to transfer station. Uh, and eliminating that portion of the contract. But that's a big step, so.
So.
We need a lot of discussion on that.
Us not having those, those types of barrels, did that cause issues during the process?
So, it doesn't cause issues. It just limits who to bid on us. And so, by doing that, you lessen the amount of competition you can do at your table, so, um...
Are there, um?
Board just does a great job. I mean, I, he, he has surpassed every expectation for customer service, I think, and he does a really good job. So, you don't necessarily get that, but, um, you know, with other companies. But the bulk of them have the trucks that operate automatically because it's quicker, it's faster. Um, and so, where we don't have that, if we were to get a bid from one of those companies, we would also have to have some sort of discussion about how we would supply our residents with the barrels that fit their machine.
Is there, uh, is there grants for that to, to provide those barrels to our residents?
Yes, maybe not in total, but definitely, just a second, Kevin, but definitely in, um, definitely in, in part at least. And we, we have a good, uh, relationship with Mass DOP where we're all on her list serves.
Okay.
Yeah, th- those bins are about $65 apiece, so we're looking at a good chunk of money.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mallory, um, if we did have that type of barrel in the future that went with an automated system, would the price recycling go down?
Um, well, recycling's tricky because that's really done by weight and all of that, but trash collection could go down because we would have more people bidding. And they all know, like, these people all know who each other are in this game. They kind of have territory, territories, like, they, they understand each other and what each other is capable of. And so, if we had those barrels, like, in Easton, I have waste management and everything is these little arms. And, um, so, waste management couldn't possibly bid on us, on Dayton. They just keep, doesn't make sense.
It cuts off the label because those trucks run usually with one person.
Exactly. They don't have to get out of the car.
Yeah. Let's comp.
Hello.
Right. Hi, Mary.
Hello.
The barrel doesn't get thrown up the driveway.
Yeah.
Doesn't blow away. It doesn't blow away. And then, you really don't need a lot of the front money for, um, the trash barrel, the trash bags. Like, right now, we are putting the bill first, and then we recoup the revenue later for the trash bags. Um, you could almost eliminate it. You still have to provide some because any extra has to be in a, in a bag. But, um, you don't have to really deal with that as much. Now that we finally have a great bag, it's not that much of a problem. But for a while there, there was issues with all of our bags, the size, and, you know, how effective they were, so.
We are, if I may, um, we are definitely increasing the cost of, the price of trash bags, um, both small and large. We anticipate about a $60,000, $70,000 increase in revenue. And that's gonna happen shortly.
So, what, what is the proposal on that, Tom? To go to what?
Yeah.
Oh, uh, 50 cents. They're gonna go from 15 to 20 per, and from 7.50 to 10. So, it'll be 25 on, 25 cents on the small bags and 50 cents on the large bags.
And when was the last time we did that?
Oh, God, I bet it was, uh, 10 years ago.
Was it that long?
I don't think it's been that long, Tom.
Yeah.
I don't think so. That sounds too long.
We did it in, we did it in 2010, I think it was, and this is 2020.
That's when, that's when we went from 10 to 15 dollars?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I mean, there's, it's legitimate. I mean, there is, the cost to dispose the trash and recycling has continued to go through the roof, so, um...
Especially recyclings.
Yeah, yeah.
Tom, if you have the, the, uh, automated pickup with the bins, do you still separate trash from recycling at the curbside?
Sometimes, we have to look at it, but some towns have a bin for trash and a bin for recycling. So, we, something we gotta look at.
We have waste management here in Franklin, and, uh, we have a bin.
I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't hear that.
That's, that's all right. So, we have waste management here in Franklin as well. We have separate bins. We have single stream recycling bin, and then we have the trash, the trash bin.
Right.
Works very well. Uh, the idea is, is we're trying to get our recycling up here in, in Franklin to, uh, lower, lower the tonnage that's showing up at CMAS. And, you know, I, I like it. Plus, we have a transfer station here. So, if we miss, if we miss pickup on our, on our pickup day, we go to the transfer station at the end of the week, and we could basically recycle the same types of things. We can put in the recycling bin plus a few extra things.
How much in tonnage do we have in rubbish versus recycling?
Uh, that'd be a question for Tom, I think, right now.
Yeah, and I don't have those numbers in front of me. I think Todd might be on here. He may, he may have that answer.
Um, I am here, and I don't have access to the files from here, but I know we do about 600 tons of trash. And the recycling, I think, is, like, only a few hundred tons.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
So.
Don't forget, last year, recycling went from $30 a ton to $90 a ton.
Right.
So, it went crazy.
Yeah, so we're paying basically the same for three times in, in overall recycling cost as rubbish cost for about three times the tonnage.
Yeah, and it continues to go up.
Right. We, we asked this last year, if you guys had talked about it all, going back to every other week on recycling. Like, $51,000 increase, that's not to pick on Chief McDonald who joined in, but it's a police officer, right?
Definitely a cruiser.
At least.
At least a cruiser.
So, this was something that, uh, the town administrator and I had, uh, she had prepared a list of, just like, different general ideas. We have not discussed it as a board or anything of how we could potentially save some money. And this was something that I had, uh, asked her about, um, potentially going back to biweekly. Obviously, we haven't had that conversation with the Board of Health, so, um, I'm glad to see that the finance committee is also thinking of that as well.
Yeah.
What about the, what about the pink bags? What do they reduce? Do they reduce trash and recycling?
Just re, just recycling.
Okay.
Well, both actually.
No, 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 solid waste, yeah, solid waste.
Some people put their clothing in the trash.
Do we know how many tons the pink bags are taking?
Yeah, I believe it's, yeah, it's around one ton a month, uh, maybe two tons a month. So, we're only talking about taking like 30 or 40 tons out of the waste stream.
Do we, do we have an idea of what percentage of the residents that obviously leave trash out actually do recycle?
Uh, I would, I would, probably 90% of, well, you mean total recycling, yeah.
No, no, but they actually leave a recycling bin out as well as trash.
Probably about 90%. Some people still bring it to the transfer station.
Your recycling IQ program, um, could maybe glean some, or shed some light on that. Um, once you get that up and running, you'll be able to kind of figure that out if you. Yeah.
You know, I brought this up before, and nobody wants to really get involved in it, but there are communities that make outside haulers get permits to come into town and lug stuff away from dumpsters. We know there are private residents that have dumpsters parked in the front yard. There's no recycling. It's just a whole, just dump everything in there. But there are communities that require those haulers to be licensed, and they get fees for them. Maybe we need to look at that. It's income.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. That's definitely a worthy discussion.
We wouldn't be groundbreakers because I've been sat through MMA meetings, and they've talked about it, and some of them do very well. But it's also a way of, um, sort of keeping track of who's hauling what because some communities ran into problems because God only knows what's in these dumpsters. And there were problems with a certain community, uh, because of stuff that was being hauled out by, uh, those haulers. And there was things in those haul, those bins that got dumped that, um, I don't remember, it was hazardous or something else. But it created a problem for that community because whatever the violation was got traced back to the community, and they had to figure out where it came from. And that's when they realized they had these dumpsters that were pretty much free for alls.
I, I think that's a good idea, and we can implement that pretty quickly, I think.
Lakeville, Mass actually has dumpster permits. Um, and I think it's $15 per, per dumpster, and they actually have regulations to go with it.
Tom does also.
Do you have the regs, Kevin?
I can go and always check with the Lakeville and see if.
Oh, that's right. You don't work for Lakeville anymore.
Kind of tailor it to us, or just take a look at it first, you know?
Yeah, yep, yep. Okay. All right, so let's move on to, um, Department 510. Well, first, welcome, Mary, Chief McDonald, Tom Ferry, Tim Ryan.
Hello.
Ma, Mary, Board of Health, and then we'll come back to yours.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. So, um, in the 510 budget, I know, Tom, you sent out a note today that you CC'd the finance committee on. And I'll read it for the benefit of the rest of, unless, Mallory, you have it, that you could share it.
I don't have it electronically, uh, for speaker.
Actually, I think I do. I believe I do. I just gotta sham my screen.
Okay, Warren 510 is for the overtime and additional hours for the health agent.
Yeah, that's why I'm gonna, um, do I have the ability to share a file? Oh, yeah, I do.
Sure, you kind of see at the bottom, there's a, a whole.
I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. So, what I shared is a letter that Tom, um, the Board of Health sent today requesting some changes in line 5131. Correct, Tom?
Yeah, um, well, basically, what we're looking at, at this point, uh, our FAP money that we received for the, uh, moving to Perdness is, uh, pretty much spent and accounted for already. And we don't see this going away, uh, anytime soon. We're hoping, uh, our thought was on this, we don't spend it, we don't spend it. However, I would rather have, instead of going, uh, into the red on that budget line for the remainder of the year, and perhaps, uh, well, this is for fiscal year '21, so, um, if it comes back in the fall, we think we're gonna need this money probably, especially if we don't get any FAP money, so.
So, here, here, here's my concern, and we talked about this, not ju, just in generalities, I don't know if you were here when we had it, but, um, just because money is a very difficult, um, thing to look at right now. As you guys know, for the same reason you're talking about adding additional hours or having extra hours sitting there just in case, we don't know what just in case means. We don't know what, um, is gonna happen to the overall budget because of the situation that we're in. So, we are being very conservative on doing those types of things.
Mm-hmm.
Of that. So, if, 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 if it can be laid out and shown us in a deeper detail the things that will be done because of this extra money, that's a different story. But if the rationale for putting extra money is just because, and we could talk about it again in the fall when we have a better handle, I would prefer to do that, or as we get further in, um, if there's enough money to get it to October, we'll have a better knowledge of what just because mean and what the COVID cuts mean. I would prefer to do it that way.
I know it's.
Can I, uh, can I interject?
I'm not sure if I feel comfortable with that.
I, I would say, if I may, I think some of the things we have to look at is the reopening. And we kind, Todd and I actually talked about that. When it is time to reopen, uh, our office is gonna be, uh, spearheading some of this stuff when we actually reach out to these restaurants. Um, we're gonna get directives from the Department of Public Health, and we need to be able to, um, have that, those funds on the sides so we can manage that properly. But I was also thinking we were gonna have multiple meetings now. We haven't, we only... But I was also thinking we were gonna have multiple meetings now. We hadn't, we only kind of been going through the agent now, but as we reopen, we're gonna be going, I would say, more frequent instead of the twice a month or whatever it is, to take these directives, come up with some plans moving into the fall, especially obtaining some PPE. It's gonna be crucial. So I think it's meetings. I think the opening that nobody knows exactly what's happening with that.
Right.
And that would help.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Kevin, we agree, we all agree with that. It's just the unknown of where we're gonna be from a budget standpoint, putting it in now versus knowing, you know, in reality, the June, the, the June budget is always, it's, yes, it's, it's supposed to be the town's budget, but it's really a preliminary budget before you get the final stuff. And we're not gonna have the final stuff in June. So we're trying to, as you guys anticipate it, but I just wanna be sure that it's, it's the right anticipation that we do. It may not be enough. It may be too much. It, it's, it's that unknown factor. So putting quote, and I hate to use the word because everyone, putting a little fluff in just in case. I don't know if we have the ability to do that this year, and that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, another concern of ours was we had to pay our town nurse. If Todd could give you the figure, I think it was $1,800. What she does is contact tracing. And thank goodness there are the this help with partnership through the DPH. But if she, she alone was, spent $1,800. Well, she worked. So these things are coming fast and furious. And obviously, our office is just trying to prepare for what's coming next. Obviously, we don't want to be in the red, so that's why we came to you guys.
Right, right.
I think.
All right, so I, so I get, and okay, I, so I understand that from the, from the agent side and the overtime side on, on, on what you talked about, Kevin. Can, can you guys explain what the additional hours to the office manager line, how that plays into the stuff that you talked about, Kevin?
Okay, well, so from my understanding, it's what's coming down the pike. So right now, they've been reaching out to these, like just, just this week, we were trying to get some more information out to the restaurants and all the, whatever, whatever the governor sends out, we send it out. And obviously, they're not at work all the time. And now with this reopening, we just wanna figure out, we would just wanna have in place the folks and, and have it streamlined just like everyone else. We don't want any gaps. We just want it to run smoothly. And if that, if that entails them working extra hours, and even not myself, I'll volunteer hours if I have to. Extra meetings, we'll have those folks at the meetings, Rosalind and Todd. We're, we're gonna have to get together at some point and talk about how are we gonna obtain PPE for the future? What about communication? Are we gonna have 911 blasts, whatever that is, unrest calls? What are we gonna do to get the word out to folks? So we, we're just looking at things to be in place so we can be more proactive, because this took everyone by surprise. And now that we know what's going on, we can actually plan and get a better handle on this.
Okay, so, so from, from, so from our perspective, we'll, we'll take the, the additional request under advisement, but we won't make a recommendation on this budget until Tuesday to give the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to discuss it amongst themselves and, and the town administrator to see what their recommendation is so that, so we can have all sides of it. I don't, I don't think it's fair to anybody here to make a decision tonight on, on the request for the additional that we got today without allowing administration to look at it and, and have some discussion amongst themselves also.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Disagree. Oh, sorry, Pete. Go ahead.
I have two questions that would basically pay for this. What, what is the communication allowance in 510?
I don't have that in front of me.
Six, $60 a month communication allowance.
Oh, that, Todd, cellphone usage. That's his primary method of communication when he's out on the street, when he's out at home. He's available 24/7 and that's his contact number.
And then the communications in 519?
519.
I don't have it in front of me.
It's 2900. It's an increase of 2500.
Oh, I got a note here that says semi-annual mailings.
Oh, yeah, that, that's still our newsletter that we wanna put out.
So you, it's something that hasn't been done in the past that you guys are looking to start to do?
Yeah, it was the same thing we did. We were starting to prepare it until all this happened, so.
So couldn't that line be used for some of the additional? Because obviously, if the focus is gonna be back to doing the stuff for against COVID-19, should we not be looking at reallocating? Is that something new that, that is not, you know, we haven't done in the past? And it's probably gonna take second fiddle to what's necessary to be done for COVID-19. Can we not in the short term, take a look at reshuffling the funds that were requested for that additional $2,500? That, that would almost cover what.
Yeah, we could do that. That's fine.
We're up for that.
That, that makes sense.
We could do that.
Mr. Chairman?
So let, let the Board of Selectmen have some discussion about that and the town administrator and, and, and we'll circle back when we meet again on Tuesday night in regards to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense, yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Brett.
Just one suggestion on communications. Just because times are hard right now, if it's not possible to do a paper communication or a paper newsletter, if we cannot afford it, then one suggestion is what the town administrator does, which is send an electronic version that also is on the website as well. So it's ju- just another option until, you know, things maybe are a little bit more clear in terms of our funds.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna have some discussion about some of that stuff in. Mallory had shared some things with me because I asked a question about, questions about extra hours and that. Because we have to be really frugal in why we do it and, and we need more detail. That's why I asked for that extra. And talking about it, you know, that is something I think we need to develop a better handle on. Communication via social media for the town, that it should be assigned through one person that controls it, that puts out that information. So if the Board of Health has something to go out, it goes through the person that, quote, I think Mallory used the word website manager, or we could website social manager, something like that. We as a town, from a communication standpoint, need to get a, become a more a society than we are, to be able to do a better job of that. That, you know, I know Brett, you do a great job of, of putting a bunch of that stuff as a segment, but I think we need to focus it on how we can get better from a broader perspective from the town.
And just not to get into too much, but part of that, Ed, is that there's a vacuum right now because we don't have, and we've never really had a central website administrator. And I'm not saying we need a new position. I'm not saying any of that. I'm just saying we don't have that point person who, when we need something to post, that's, that's the person who's part of their work is to do that. And so when we did the website, I had to do the website because we didn't have that. So it's just something to think about. I agree with you, Ed, 100%.
That's a great setup to Mallory's request. So any other, any other questions?
We work well together.
What, what percent of the population do you think we reach with the electronic? With an electronic newsletter?
So I can tell you from my experience, I have, we have that mailing list that Slackman's Office put together early on before I even arrived in Dayton. We sent it out there. I put it on social media. We have a decent following. And there are some people that happen to print it out and share with their friends and people that they know. And I get comments on my newsletter all the time about somebody actually gave me like a tip, I guess, like a suggestion on what to write and wrote in. So it does have a decent reach. And I think with COVID-19, we are, you know, the task for us is to continue our operations as remotely as we can. And I think the onus is on us to better communicate, you know, electronically, which is why we're putting efforts into code red and alert systems and, and having a better digital present. So I think this fits perfectly with the network administrator. I, I call it a website administrator. But it fits perfectly with us rolling out some of these communications and these endeavors.
I'm on board with that. I think that's a great idea to do electronically.
Yeah, but Tom, we all know you don't reach the majority of people in this town except by USPS. That's why we went to the town meeting warrant being mailed. I like electronic communication. However, the larger, the group of older people, residents in this town won't, don't own a computer or won't go on and do this. I mean, we tried, as you know, everything we could think of to get the warrant out. And I kept insisting we needed to do what Rehoboth did. And when we did it, people were happy that they actually got a warrant. Not that they showed up at town meeting, but we know that we hit everybody in town. It's, it's a difficult thing to try to do. You know, simply because not everybody has a computer and not everybody wants to communicate electronically.
No, I totally agree with you, Selectmen Gular. I think it's just right now, since it may not be possible for them to do a a paper newsletter, maybe in this next fiscal year, then we'll try to, we'll have to do something to be inventive, to fill that gap, to get us to you know, that point when we can again. So I agree. There's nothing better than mail in this town, for sure.
And, and, and you know, we still can always use our electronic medium of channel, of, of cable to communicate, you know, key points of, of what's necessary. And it will continue to scroll in those one-page PowerPoints that flash up on the screen every 30 seconds. And if cable holds it longer than five seconds on the screen, so it stays up there and it gets more scrolls, that's the secondary way. Because for those people that don't have a computer, most of them do have a television. And, and we communicate that if you need information, it scrolls on, on Cable Channel 9. For those people that have.
If we could only get Channel 9 on Dish, because we got a lot of Dish people in town. And that's due to the cost of Comcast, quite frankly.
Yeah, so, but, all right, so we'll take a look at that and as part of that whole big package of, of where those additional things are going and where we could, we could possibly move it from. And we'll, when we get to that recommendation on Tuesday night, we'll, we'll keep you guys up to date on that. We're gonna look, we'll, we'll look to satisfy that request by utilizing what's already in there.
I have the 7510.
Yep, go ahead.
I have the salary health agent conservation perk review. I'm not sure if that got moved to conservation or what are we doing with that?
That's for me, just for the rest of the Finance Committee. I had asked a question about these three lines when the Board of Health presented to the Board of Selectmen. And apparently, so to answer your question, Tom, no, it has not been moved to the Conservation Commission. And my recommendations actually zero out those three requests because to me, it seems like the person's being paid twice for doing their regular duties. So I, I recommend it to take it out.
So where is that, Mallory?
So in 510, you'll see lines.
5106?
Thank you. 5106.
No, 5108. No?
It doesn't have a line number.
They, they broke out, the health agent salary was all like grouped into one. And so the, the Board of Health and being transparent had separated them out at their screen. It just says salary and what it was. And so the only one I think I might be a little leaning on is the Conservation perk review because it is extra work. But I wanted it to be highlighted and up for discussion.
So is it gonna stay with the Board of Health and get a line number, account number?
Well, that's their request. That's what would have to be voted on.
Let me give. Where was this before?
I'm gonna give it, it was in our budget.
They were all mushed in together into the health agent line 5106. And so the, see how it's 5106, salary, health agent, plural? That included.
Or is it the same person?
Different people.
It's different people.
So, so what's been happening is.
Todd was gonna say something.
All right, so it wasn't in the budget. So what was happening is at the end of every year, he was submitting his bill and we had to like pull the money from somewhere else because we didn't have a line for it. So we were trying to create a line to cover the, the cost. So it's accounted for in year to year in the budget.
So, so that, that $2,275, if I added right, is was in, in FY. So, I'm sorry, so this, help me to understand this then. If that money was already in 5106 in FY '20, correct?
No. All right, so in 50, in FY '20, the salary for the health agent line 5106 and the line for the salary health agent COA was all together. The health, Assistant Health Agent is a line we're looking for to get somebody to cover for me when I'm on vacation for a couple of weeks.
So that's, that, so that's new.
That's new. And the salary health agent conservation perk review, we've always been paying the money, but there was never a line item for it in the budget. So we're looking, so we can track it and better prepare the budget and know it's there because that's about how much he's been averaging over the last few years.
Where has that been coming from?
We've been transferring it at the end of the year from funny funds that were extra or whatever to pay that.
Wherever they could find it, Peter.
Yeah.
Yeah, he would submit, he would submit his invoice, we'd have to pay it.
Under 5106, not, not 5300.
So.
Right.
Could I, I wanted to be a little.
I have a question. I thought we couldn't do transfers of salaries at, at any time. So how are we, how are we paying this?
You can do, you can move your personnel.
You have to speak closer. Nobody can hear you.
All right, you can use transfer, you can transfer as long as it's.
Can't hear you.
Transfer personnel? I thought it was only expenses.
No, I, it's, it's applicable. You could vote on a transfer. It would be the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I don't remember doing salary transfers though, such as that, so.
Does anybody remember this being brought forward as an old bill? Because I'm kind of thinking we've got these late and they end up as old bills. Does that ring any bells?
We didn't have any old bills with us then.
Oh, okay. But it comes in very late.
So.
I mean, we could have, we wanted to be a little more transparent because historically rotated out of that line. And we, we forget the, because it doesn't have its own line, so we forget about the additional.
What, what I just asked to see is, with the exception of the Assistant Health Agent, which is a new request, I'd like, like to see, and Chris, if you could pull this for us for Tuesday, see what we actually spent over FY '19 and FY '18 and FY '20 on those actual lines. They weren't, they weren't separate lines, but we must have had expenditures. So if somebody can share with me what the actual expense was for, for those two lines, it'd be, it'd be good to know.
Okay. We're eliminating the salary health agent COA, which is $250.
Oh, okay, so, but that's still a request. So, so you're withdrawing that request?
Yes.
Okay.
But the Conservation perk review, he was doing this probably for the last 10 years and being paid for it out of, out of.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanna see what that actual expense was for the last four years. I'm not opposed to, to making.
Yeah, it's somewhere around 1200 to 1500.
All right, so, so Chris, if you can just. So, so Chris, if you can just look back and let us know on that. Mallory, can you update the FY '21 departmental request on that one to eliminate the 250 for the health agent COA?
Yes, yes. I said yes, if you can hear me.
Actually, Chris?
Yes.
My thought is, probably the fastest way to get this, since it's always been the same person, Mary can check the, the W, the tax statement. Because this is the only thing he got paid for, wasn't it, Mary?
Correct.
I'm sorry?
Mary, it's always the same person that gets this money, correct?
Yes.
All right. So if you were to look at his, his tax statement for year end, you'd know exactly how much money it was, wouldn't you?
I could do that, yes.
That would be faster than Chris trying to go back four years.
Yep, I can do that.
Just a suggestion.
Okay. Tom, do you have anything else?
Yeah, did you want to talk about uniform allowance? Are you okay with that? This is for the, it's actually for the health agent who does the perk, perk tests and is out in the field and in the rain and the snow and the mud, in the water.
So that position, is it covered, it's not covered by any contract, right?
No.
No.
Yeah. That's, that's pretty standard on all health agents. They, they, like I said, he could do a perk one day, just get soaking wet, mud, whatever it is.
Understood.
Grease, grease from the back hose, it just, it just.
I saw what he had to go through in my, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty standard. That's, if you check all health agents, all towns, a uniform allowance is the bare minimum, right?
Yeah, understood, understood.
Well, it's also been suggested that I should get embroidered Tony Dyson logo on some shorts or jackets too, so.
That makes sense.
Any more questions on Board of Health?
I just got a comment. I have no problem with the health agent having a shirt or whatever with a logo on it, considering the fact that we pay for people clothing allowances that aren't even required to have a name badge, just to saw a point we've all had for a period of time.
Yes.
So, Mallory or Chris, can you just update, even though we don't know where our final number will come out, can you just at least put in the FY '21 departmental request, Tom's updated request, and then just put notes next to it? And when we make our recommendations, that's where the final number will come from. But I think we should at least have them in there and then we'll make our recommendations as part of the changes.
Tom, are they coming out of 510 or 519? Or both?
They were both in, one was in 510 and the office manager one was in 519.
Okay, and it's going up by $2,000. Okay, so I'm updating now.
Yep. Well, 510 was going, request was up 1,000 to 3,000.
Yeah.
And then 519 was a request from 2,000 to 3,000.
But I just updated those.
Yeah, I just want to have them in there, even though that's not where we, we may finally shake out at the end, but at least have the full request in there.
Right.
Are you guys, gentlemen, are you all good with that?
Yep, that sounds good.
Good.
All right. Thanks, thanks, Todd, thanks, Tom, thanks, Kev. Any questions?
Stay safe, guys.
I don't think we're done.
All right, thanks, guys. Mary, 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 thanks for your patience.
No problem.
Ed, Ed, wait a minute, Tom says we're not done.
Oh, we're not done?
No. You did the, I think, street cleaning and stormwater you did with Tom Ferry?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Emergency preparedness, did you do that with Chief McGee?
I believe so.
Which is 299?
I don't know if that was even on there.
299?
No, that wasn't done with him.
Emergency preparedness, the subcommittee to Board of Health.
He's saying it was not done with him.
Okay, for Department 299, the only notes I have were March 11th. And, um, for line. 5340 communications, it just said, emergency call system. Mallory will get my exact cost info for this. But I don't, other than that, I think the Board of Selectmen said, okay, send it to the FinCom.
Okay. Chief, you're on here, you wanted to discuss it?
So the increase in the communications was basically for the, at the time, we didn't know what the software was that we were gonna roll out. We've decided to go with the Code Red software, so that was what the increase was for, just to be able to pay the annual fee for that program.
Chief?
Yes.
So that money for the system will come out of the fire department's budget going forward?
No, no, it'll come out of the emergency preparedness budget.
Got you, thank you.
Because it's gonna be utilized by pretty much every department in the town, so it made more sense to come from that budget rather than trying to split it up between everybody else's.
Awesome, thank you, chief.
Is that a $5,000 annual fee?
She said 500, sorry, it's a little hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, $2,500 a year.
And just one last question about the Code Red was, is this a contract that was signed with them? And is it multi-year? I'm sorry if I missed this.
It is a contract that was signed and it's for three years.
Thank you.
And step funds are paying for the first year, was that said? Step funds paid for the first year?
Correct. Did you guys hear that?
I don't know why this is happening.
Chris, will this code, emergency call system, how can I say this? Will it call both home line, landlines and cell phones if the person designates use this number? Is that how it's gonna work?
Yes.
Can a person have more than one number?
They can have more than one number, they can have more than one email address, there's multiple ways that you can be notified.
Okay, thank you.
This is gonna be an excellent tool moving forward to reach out to folks. So it's good.
Yeah, Selectman Goulart, you had mentioned before that there are people in town that don't have a computer, you know, don't want to be bothered with a cellphone. And so this is something I think is really worthwhile, so thanks.
Oh, I do too. I do too.
Yep. So, all right, thank you, thanks, guys.
One more thing.
Go ahead, Tom.
You don't want to leave us, Tom?
On, count 519. 5300 professional, we're trying to bump that up $500. Primarily because of legal expenses. This year, we had a situation up here on Shop Lot Road that we were able to deal with with our professional and technical for legal costs. But I fear that, you know, there's, we need some funding for legal, should another situation arrive. And we're only asking for 500 more.
But is that town council legal? Because that all goes through the Board of Selectmen, so the Board of Health, the Board of Health should not have their own town council line. We have one town, we have one town council line.
We had funding and then it was asked of us if we would, if we could pay it, and we did. I just don't want to be stuck with a legal situation where we, we can't afford it. If, if we all agree that we're gonna go through the town council line from the Board of Selectmen, that's fine.
I asked the Board of Selectmen what their thoughts are on that because I thought issues such as that are handled via the, via, through the Board of Selectmen to, and the town administrator to town council. That, that's why we have, other than planning board, zoning board issues like that, I'm under the impression that all legal matters revolve through the town council line.
So, Mr. Chairman, what the Board of Selectmen had decided, and this was probably about a year ago, was that A, if you don't have your own town, like council line, like as you said, planning board has their council, zoning board has their council, if that's not your situation, then everything has to funnel through the town administrator in terms of reaching out to council. So no one should be, and I know the Board of Health didn't do this, but nothing, everything should be funneling up through the Board of Selectmen, through the town administrator when it comes to council.
So, so here's my question, because I look at the recommendation on that, did the Board of Selectmen take that into account when they, when they made a recommendation to allow the Board of Health to increase their professional and technical by 500? If that was truly the reason for increasing professional and technical, then it's not necessary and we can go with the, with the same amount from this year. If we, if we're going, if, if they, if their need for legal council will be run through town council.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think for me as a selectman, I only asked them about the communications because it was a $2,500 increase. I don't even think I asked them a question about professional and technical.
So, so Tom, with that being said, that, that the legal council that's necessary for Board of Health will funnel through the Board of Selectmen to town council line, do you necessarily need that incremental?
No.
No. I didn't hear you, did you say no, Tom?
I said no, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
As we understand that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely, Tom.
Okay, so Tom, are we only talking about $500 to remove that and leave the rest of the professional and technical in there?
Yes.
So the line should be $1,000, right?
About $100.
I think it was 1,500 last year.
They were asking for a $500 increase this year.
2,000, yeah, so we'll leave 1,500.
Oh, all right. So just, just, all right, just take out the 500, that was the extra. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Fine, I just want to ask a question here, and I know we talked about 5340. Can we leave a few hundred in there for, and I know you don't want to hear it, just in case.
No, we'll, we'll, we'll leave what you had this year, the 400 that you had this year.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm done, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Unless somebody else from the board that's there has a question.
No. I don't.
Okay, thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night. Hey, you guys, stay safe.
So, Mallory, in that 5,300, leave it at the 2,000 and our recommendation will go to 1,500.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, I'm sorry, thumbs up.
All right, Mary, thank you for your patience.
It's okay, I'm fine.
Mary, you didn't want to come on camera with us tonight?
No.
Mrs. Hathaway, are you in your jammies?
No, I'm not.
But we won't know either way.
No, you won't.
Are you allowed to ask that?
Well, it's kind of late now.
All right, so let's start with your, with the treasurer, collector, straight budgets before we get into some of the other ones that you're responsible for.
Okay.
I'm sliding. I'm a little slow, Mary, when it comes to moving the computer around.
That's okay.
What department number?
145.
145.
Okay, I got it.
I'm assuming, Mary, in 5156, somebody became eligible for a sick leave bonus?
5156.
Oh, oh yeah, it's a 50% increase of 220 from 150 to 220.
Yes, yes.
I was just looking at the percentage.
I have a new assistant, a new senior.
Open my mouth. Overall, we like that you've reduced the expenses by $4,500.
Yes, I have, I, the professional and technical went down because I have to pay the, the process of, you know, GASP 45, the actuarial. So that, that's due for like $6,000 this year, but it covers for two years. So I could reduce that, that budget line.
All right, any questions on 145?
A question from Mallory.
I knew this was coming.
I, I, I'm pretty sure I know why, but I'll just let you.
So you're asking about the salary?
Yes.
So I, really, this is here mostly for discussion. I've mentioned it a few times, I think it's wide to combine the treasurer, collector positions. I know that that's a bit of an uphill climb and it's up to the voters. But my recommendation is basically you're, there are two different positions and you're funding them at 45 or so each, $45,000 each. If we had a separate collector, it'd be rather disastrous for operations. And quite frankly, I don't even know where we'd put them as far as office space is concerned. So this is really a discussion piece to kind of highlight the need of combining these positions, discussing appointed versus elected. The appointed treasurer is a recommendation of DOR, just because of the expertise and all of the nuances that go with borrowing, short-term borrowing, long-term borrowing, borrowing, you know, basically to cover shortfalls that we may have. So anyway, I, I leave it here for discussion and it looks like it worked.
Yeah, so I, I, I agree, I think we brought this up in the past. It's really a discussion for the Board of Selectmen to have, that I'm not, obviously, this annual town meeting is not the time to have it. We don't, we really, I'm not sure if it, it's one of those things that I've always advocated big things like that happen at an annual, not a special. So I think we're probably a year away because of the situation that we're in. But I think it is a topic of discussion that the Board of Selectmen should be having on an ongoing basis to, to take a look at that. So my thoughts. Peter, go ahead, I know you had brought it up.
Just, yeah, agree with this, with that, along the same lines as we had talked over the last couple of years about, you know, what could happen with town accountant if that had been the position. To see that or the treasurer or the collector be, you know, nothing against, I like having Mary there, but I would think Mary would be better as an appointed position. But again, not, not anything that we can take care of now, but can start the discussion.
I also think that if we're gonna be discussing this, Mary's gonna be retiring, so she should be allowed to finish out the term she's currently holding.
Correct. I agree.
I don't want Mary to retire.
But, you know, that's the thing, that's the thing that gives us time, because I think Mary, I have two more years left anyway, but.
I do, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those that, that two years will come up on us a lot quicker than we think it will.
Well, Ed, we thought we had a committee to discuss this and the committee went completely too, because we had a list of things. We had, this was on part of the assignment for that governmental study committee we had.
Yeah.
Governance committee, correct, that was the word.
Well, I think, Peter, I think it's on the table. I think someone just needs to continue to run with it and not let it sit in the background and put it on the Board of Selectmen's agenda maybe once a month, so it, just so it gets talked about and it doesn't get, you know, we're not here having the same discussion and Mary's one year left and we haven't put it on the annual town meeting. Because really, we, it should go on next year's annual town meeting to be effective the following year. So it can be addressed during that last 12 months of, of, unless Mrs. Hathaway decides she wants to stay beyond her retirement.
Yes, well, Mrs. Hathaway, you have an open invitation to stay as long as you want, so. so.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Hathaway may have something to say about that.
Right, yeah.
He wants me still working.
I just don't know. We've been very lucky to have you, Mary, I'm not sure how many more of you there are in the town of Dayton that we have that could fill those shoes, so, I would love you also to be part of that conversation as well, okay?
So, that's fine with me, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, any questions on 145?
No, thank you for the reduction, Mrs. Hathaway.
You're welcome.
On both 145 and 146, much appreciated.
Yep.
So, let's go down to everyone's favorite topic, debt and health insurance.
Debt.
They go hand in hand a lot of times, Ed.
What about 146?
Did I skip right by one of yours? No, I said 146.
Well, that's not debt.
We, no, 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 we said 146, we thanked Mary for the reduction in 145 and 146.
Yeah.
And on to debt.
What line, what number for debt and health insurance?
710. 710.
So, Mary, is that 235 number on the?
Police station.
Yeah, is that a solid number?
Yes.
Okay. And the 1, 156, 425 on the interest is correct, too? I, I asked that because that's the number that at fall, we like to try and reduce if we have the free cash to do it. So.
Yep, that's what's on the schedule.
Ooh, reductions, reductions across the board.
Yeah, we had a, a federal five that's a paid off.
Every, every year, our interest goes down on the, on the note, so. You feel comfortable on the, on the pension contribution number from the retired, do we have the official number from them on 9/11?
Yes, I do, I, yes.
Okay.
Yep, I already got that. They were trying to have it, see, we pay the whole thing in July.
Yeah.
So, they don't have to pay, because they save money, and I guess they, Bristol County, they met, and they were trying to have, have it reduced, like, the interest, like, to waive the interest and have it two payments, but they wouldn't budge on that, so.
Okay.
But, you know, they're still saving money by paying the whole thing off.
So.
Rookers comp, I don't do.
Yeah, health insurance, 18%?
Well, I tell, we, remember we added more people, we have a lot more people on our insurance now than ever. I only budgeted actually 5% extra with two different, you know, with two extra, like I always do, but we had so many people that have come on during the year, it's just, it's, you know.
Is it?
Nothing I can do.
Is it new employees or people who are changing from another family members?
New employee, new employees, we have a lot of new employees that have picked it up.
Are there also anticipated rate increases, not rate, excuse me, premium increases as well, is that also why, Mary?
It was, it was only 2%, but I did budget for 5%.
Okay, that's probably a good idea.
You know, and, and I also, and I also, you know, put in, like, two extra policies in each, each plan, and it's hard to, and now the senior plan, they're, they're from January to December, so it's not, I don't know what their rate's going to be in July, you know, in, in January, because it's January to June next year, because they're, they're on a different schedule.
Is there a little bit of room in that number, Mary, if we needed to?
I'm close this year already with what I budgeted for last year, there would be a little bit of room, but.
Yeah, okay.
I, that's, that's one I don't like to touch.
Yeah.
My OPAB, I was, my OPAB, I.
Oh, yeah, we'll.
When I did my budget for OPAB.
We'll talk about that, we'll talk about that one. Another discussion. Any, any questions on 914? I know it's a big budget line, so I want to open that up to any questions.
Mary, on group health insurance, without getting into particulars, I assume that within the group wherein each community is rated based upon the number of claims and the dollar value of the claims?
No, not on.
Or is it all the claims pooled and then the rate set? Excuse me?
No, they, yeah, they, they see what the claims are for all the groups and see where we are financially in the group, and then we all vote to see, you know, what percentage we want to, you know, they recommend a percentage, and then we go from there, but 2% was really good this year, I don't think next year's going to be as, as well, as good.
So, all right, so they pool all the claims, they pool the claims so that each.
From all the towns.
Each community's claims ends up in the pool, but all of us share in the other community's liabilities. Okay, so my question now is.
Right, right.
Is, is our, when I say our group, I'm talking the entire group, everyone in the pool, are we a relatively healthy group?
Yes, we had, we had a couple of big towns that left the group, and that really helped us, actually, because they had a lot of higher claims than we currently have.
So, they were a drain on the, yeah, okay.
They were, they were.
They were a drain on the assets, yeah, okay.
All right.
Yes, they were.
All right, any other questions on health insurance? So, we'll move down, Mary, to the one I know is near and dear to your heart, OPAB. I will say, we will, we will target, we'll target to recommend your request, but no, that is also one that we always look at in the fall to increase if possible.
I know.
So, we will target that, it just.
And the only reason before, when I, when I did, yeah.
If we can go higher than what we funded last year, but we'll, we will definitely take that into account as we go through the finalized number.
Okay, that's fine. Like I said, when I did my budget, it was before all this stuff was happening, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Mary, you're going to come back when free cash is certified?
Always.
You know it.
That's what we say, is she nuts?
I laugh at that high number, but.
Yeah. But, but we continue to be, you know what, we, we continue to be a leader on that front of, of funding our liability, it just, some years are tougher than others to, to try and get caught up, but we will, we will continue to keep that on the forefront.
Okay, perfect.
We've never missed a year, I mean, we don't always put the same amount, but we've never missed a year.
Right, right.
Right.
All right, any other questions for the Treasurer Collector?
And one, one question on that tax title.
Yes, I haven't done my tax title yet, and I'll tell you why. Usually, I always do it after April, you know, like, right around this time, but there's so many people that are refinancing right now, that in order to refinance, they have to pay off their old taxes, in which is only last year's taxes, 19, is the one I would have to put in tax title. So, I'm waiting just a little bit longer to do my taking because of that reason, because there are so many people refinancing right now that they have to pay their 19 if they're overdue. So, I'm just trying, and I hate to, you know, put them in the paper and all this right now, but like Mallory said, I have to do my job, and that's, you know.
So, Mary, you're talking.
It's not that many.
I'm heartless.
I know. He kills me.
Mary, you're talking after my 19, if.
Yes.
Let's assume I owe taxes, how far back would I owe taxes before you would actually, forget the refinancing, how long could I go without paying taxes before you would take action against me?
A year, I, I take the previous year.
So, the people.
I take every single year.
All right, so the people who you would be looking to do something about, who may be refinancing, do not go back further than 2019?
It goes 18, too, 18, 19, it goes for three years. They have, they look back, they order a municipal lien certificate, and it will show three years of what it's due, but I already have 18, a lien on 18, so it's just, it would be 19 that they would look at, and it's not that many, I think I have like 24 parcels.
But, it seems to me, that number, that total amount of tax money owed, and it includes personal property, and I think it's real estate and personal property.
Yeah, can't do anything.
That number is getting, it's getting close to a million bucks. Does that ring a bell?
Oh, what is owed? Yeah.
Yeah, owed to the town of Dayton, so my question.
I haven't getting, yeah.
All right, but my question is, my understanding is, you can sell those liens, the town would get its money, and the lien holder would go after the, whoever owes the taxes. Have you looked into that?
You know, me and Chris are talking about that, because if you do that, they would, you know, I, I don't, I don't try to, you know, kick people out of their houses, if we sold it, they would, they would, you know, make people leave their homes, and at this time, I just.
I understand it, and that's not what my question is, and I'm not looking to have people out in the street, but my question is, really.
I know, to sell the lien.
Because we are all concerned about finances, especially what's ahead of us, maybe '21 and '22. My thought is, we should look at the oldest taxes, all right, personal property and real estate, and quite frankly, look at the list and say, okay, how many of these should we consider selling? I don't say we have to do it, but I'm saying to you, if somebody's had personal property taxes and real estate taxes, whatever, since, I don't know when, all I'm saying to you is, if we look at them from an aging account status, those real old ones, I assume, are, continue to accumulate interest and fees, doesn't that keep going?
Yes, yes, it does.
So, they keep growing?
And that's why.
So, if we were to age them.
Some to foreclose on, yeah.
All right, so, but what I'm saying is.
See, personal property, you can't touch, you have to put a small.
Quite frankly, if somebody's going to foreclose, I would prefer it's not the town of Dayton, and if we could sell the really old ones and get our money, that wouldn't bother me as much as if the town of Dayton had to take action with that list that goes in the paper, like I see Totten puts in, but by the same token, how long does it have to go? What do we do? I mean, just a thought, again, because that number is getting high, and I think a million dollars of outstanding taxes that may get whittled down because people are refinancing, it's not going to whittle down enough, and that's an awful lot of money for this town to be waiting for, that maybe some of it's way too old and should have been sold before. That's my only comment, all right?
Mm-hmm, yes, mm-hmm.
All right, thank, thanks, Mary. All right, thank you, Mary.
Okay, all right. All right, you're welcome.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks. All right, so, the last budget before we get to the special articles is the Board of Assessors, but I don't see anyone here from the Board of Assessors. Is that correct?
Neither.
Mallory, did you get anything from them saying they wouldn't be here?
Nothing.
So, I don't want to hear it, I don't want to hear it, town meeting, that, you know, we didn't, you know, and I request the Board of Assessors to back that up, that we're here tonight, and last one, we got accused of doing stuff behind the Board of Assessors' back, and, you know, pass that message that, you know, we, we had our budget meeting and they didn't, they failed to attend.
What's that account number, please?
141.
What? Again.
141.
Thank you.
So, did, Chris, did you have a chance to talk to Carol about the, the number?
Yes, I did, Ed, as far as new growth is concerned, Carol, the upper limit for Carol would be $200,000. For the overlay, she's comfortable with $90,000.
Okay.
I'm going to, and, you know, just to, I don't want to speak for the Board of Assessors or for Carol specifically, but I think you run the risk, if, you know, if you go any higher, new growth is going to be a very conservative calculation in spite of what might be going currently, because if, if local receipts tank, you've got to make sure you can actually, you know, just because we issue a tax bill, doesn't mean we're going to collect it.
Yeah, understood, understood, but.
The word of caution, new growth, we should be very conservative on.
Yeah, I just, before we make our recommendations on, on Tuesday night, I just ask if I can get, and I, I know I've seen it, the, Mallory, if you can request it from the assessors, are you, Chris, the previous five-year history of new growth?
Sure.
The trend, the last, the last five-year trend?
Yeah, absolutely, Ed, I can actually get that from the, from the tax recaps from the last five years for you.
Okay. If you can provide that to us for the, for, for Tuesday night.
Absolutely.
Ed?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the, my budget worksheet, and the only thing I can see that the Board of Selectmen did was on lines 5101 and 5102, we crossed out the percentages there, and it says 2%, and I got 2% with a question mark because the collective bargaining agreement is not settled for the union, so that was, that's the only thing I can see, I got notes here that we sent it on to the FinCon with those two things.
And reduce the, the members' increase to 2%? In 5102?
Yeah, because that was 3.5 and 3.0, and I got 2%, 2%, and then.
Basically, what they were doing was trying to take the money back that we reduced from them last year.
And that's a good rate.
Scott, would you agree with that?
They had an issue with the 2%, no one getting the 2% rate, raise on the stipend, right, the members of the Board of Assessors?
Yeah.
So, I don't think we, the Board of Selectmen's position was to reduce 5102 to 3, I thought we wanted it to be 0, just for the board members, because the Board of Selectmen doesn't take a 2% raise, and that was our position for all of those committees and boards.
All I'm saying is, in looking at the notes that I took.
So, the Board of Selectmen recommendation says it's, it's 9905, but if you follow the 0% increase on that, it should have been 9711, correct?
Correct.
Might be my mistake, I, we might have to hash that out, because it might, I have a note there that says it's the 2%, so if that's not what you meant, then I need to fix that.
So, the reason why this particular departmental budget is a little tricky in terms of this 0% on whatever a board stipend is, is because you have, you have, the chairperson makes a real salary, so you have the principal assessor, that complicates it. I'm only talking about 5102, my understanding is 5102 is the members that meet twice a month as the Board of Assessors, this is not the assistant.
Right.
A principal assessor or the principal assessor.
Which I thought we had discussed in last year, last year, that the, that the salary for the chairman should be separated out from the principal clerk, but there's also that, is there a conflict of serving as the chairman and the principal clerk? But there's also that, is there a conflict of serving as the chairman and the principal clerk?
And that wasn't resolved.
That's a whole separate matter. Yeah.
Yes, that was going to be my question, whether the chair... And then out of that, out of the 20 budget, the 8925, if actually 4855 of that is the stipend.
We don't look at it that way, correct?
It's just funding one... Yeah, it's just funding one position, and it's recognizing her principal assessor duties.
Yes.
So what would happen if someone ran against her and won? Would that person become the principal clerk?
Correct.
Principal assessor?
That's exactly what would happen, and they'd be entitled to that salary with no oversight of anybody. So if they were brand new...
No, 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 no. I don't believe so, Ed. You're right. You've got to separate these out. There are three elected positions in the Board of Assessors. What has happened since Harold Mendoza and Dave Long, they were the elected assessor who also then held the appointed position. But you are correct in that it would seem there are still three elected positions. So if the current person who's holding the elected and the appointed position were not reelected, you would have three elected part-time officials, and you would still have a full-time appointed person. And they would not have to be the same person.
Okay. All right, at this point, that's the way it's set up.
Yeah, you've still got the three elected people. There's no question about that. But historically speaking, that's what has happened over a period of time.
Okay, so on 5102, what is the Board of Selectmen's position on the recommendation on that? Is it the 2% that they... Mallory, do you want to have further discussion on that before we vote on it on Tuesday night?
The members are in session, and they are able to make a vote if they need to. And they are, you know, I'm just looking for a clarification if I got that wrong. But I, you know, updated these recommendations based upon my notes from the meeting.
So let the note show, Mallory, please.
Just one second. Mr. Graffus, if you want to go while I grab this together.
Well, all I was saying is our overall position for raises on stipends for boards, committees, and commissions has been they don't get a 2% raise. They get nothing. Board of Selectmen doesn't take one. We had this conversation with the Board of Health when they came and presented their budget. And so it's not that the Board of Selectmen wants to take this away from the Board of Assessors, and now I'm just talking about the elected role.
Yeah.
It's that we're doing this for everybody, including ourselves, so...
It's uniform. It's uniform.
Correct, yeah. So they're not special. They're part of this.
So, Mallory, go ahead, Mallory.
My notes say that 5101 and 5102 fund at 2%. And I just have another note that says 2% salaries. So maybe that's a bad note, if that's not reflective of what you had actually voted or intended to vote.
My note shows 2% for line 5101. And for 5102, it looks like they gave... They budgeted a 2% increase, and I wrote question mark. So I'm kind of leaning towards what Brett said. Because I wouldn't have had that question mark. So I agree with what Dr. Z is saying in uniformity, okay? But I know that the discussion we had that night kind of went around and around. But the only 2% increase is line 5101. And then the caveat in the motion I made was the CBA isn't settled, so there can be no increase in the salaries for the people covered by the CBA at this point. Does that ring a bell, Brett?
Yeah, that's exactly what I have. To your point, Madam Administrator, just to button this up, Mr. Chairman, I don't think you made a mistake, Madam Administrator. I don't think we caught this at the meeting. I think because, again, I said, the way it's split out is a little bit different than how we voted on the other boards, committees, and commissions, stipends, the 2%. So I think that's what it was. It just slipped by us. I don't think it was anyone's error. We just... Their budgets are a little confusing.
I don't think it was clear, because I wouldn't have had the question mark, like, what does that mean, or something. But yeah, I agree. Yep, yep.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I will entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend an increase of 2% on line 5101 in the assessors' budget, and that there be no increase for elected members listed on line 5102 in the assessors' budget.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Goulart, my notes also have the same thing that you have. I have that question mark on the second line.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, like Brett said, it was the discussion that we had that kind of left things in the air. But yeah, we're in agreement now. We're okay now.
All right, so Mallory, you'll make that change?
We haven't voted yet.
Wait a minute.
All those that favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, objection, abstentions, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so that covers all of the budgets. Now we can move on to special articles. And then we'll hold all the recommendation stuff, and we'll do that all in the one meeting on Tuesday night. And then recap it all back, and at the end of that meeting, see where we're at, and then make our determinations where we need to go back to make any cut recommendations or to get ourselves to the levy limit. So Mallory, you going to share the special articles?
They're right here. Is that working for everybody?
There you go.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, somehow I have it in the back of my screen. Hold on, I gotta just switch. Mallory, those in the budget master sheet, too? Yes.
There are tab... There you are.
So there are no... Just so we have for an idea, Tim, you're here, right?
He was.
You might give him a mute, Tim.
Hold on.
Hold on.
There we go. I got you.
Thanks for holding on, Tim.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Even though, you know, they don't affect us on the budgeting side, do you have numbers that go with the CPC appropriations?
Yeah, the appropriations run usually 12,000. This year, we're doing 12,500, but I would allow that if I could. So I want to amend that right now because of the COVID situation, because the DLS has already notified us that the receipts are going to be down. But I'd rather make the adjustment now, so I want to put $10,000 in each bucket. There's three buckets. $5,000 in the administrative budget. And, let's see, we usually get usually around 100,000 a year, so $65,000 would go into the undesignated reserve.
Okay.
So I want to amend that right now. I don't know if I can do that without a vote now, because we voted the other night to go with the 12...
So these aren't actually done until the Board of Selectmen place them on the warrant? And you set a date for that anyway, Mallory, right, already?
It's the 13th. They're signing the warrant on the 13th.
Now, just as I say, we voted the other night to go with 12.5, but do I have the power to make an adjustment right now if you go with 10, 10, and 10 because of what the DLS is telling you?
No.
Well, it has to be submitted in writing to the Board of Selectmen anyway, correct?
Yes, and you need to...
Well, we've already done that. Okay, so just leave it 12.5 for now.
So remember what Bill McKeon always tells us, that you can go lower, you can't go higher. So if we need to amend the motion, we could do that, and we'll just put it in the higher amount.
Let me just do some quick math, yeah. So it'd be 12,500 for the three buckets.
Whatever you've already...
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. On the electric for Lincoln Village, do you have a number for that?
Yeah, it's 136, 380, I believe, or change. And what we're using is $110,000 from our housing section, and the rest is coming down of the undesignated reserve, which would be the 26.3. Give or take. There's a lot of exact numbers in front of me. We have nothing been presented to us from the building commission. So right now, we're not going to go with a warrant article at the town meeting.
Okay.
But I had said this on camera now, and I want to say in front of the Board of Selectmen that if we have to go to a special, it's a town meeting, and it is a town-owned building. If we have to go to a special, there's something wrong with the building, and we have to go that route, I would prefer to go that route if we have to. So, and as discussed at a meeting the other night, and the members agreed upon that.
Okay.
So nothing on the library.
Okay.
Now, if you want to move down to the plan copier, I'll go over that right now.
Yeah, that's fine.
We voted... There was a memorandum that was sent to the Board of Selectmen, CC, through the town administrator and a town accountant from the planning board dated January 16th about the vote. And this product is being bought through our pricing-for-mass state contract, and it's through Core Business Technologies. It's a seven MP printer, and that cost is $8,867 for the purchase price. The full coverage service, which is $105 per month, is $12,600 per year. And then the supplies comes up to 350, so give or take, it's the 10.5. This piece of equipment not only serves the planning board, Ed, but it also helped the building department. It helped the zoning board of appeals and the assessors, because we deal with a lot of large plans. And right now, our people are going to, like, Kinko's to have our plans made. So if we could do it, we've asked for it before, it was put off from last year. If it's possible, then let's see if we can do it.
Yeah, so, Tim, I understand the purchase of the... Is this a lease or is it a purchase?
This is a lease rates purchase. Yes, purchase price. We're purchasing the item, and then we're having a service plan that goes with it.
I understand the purchase of the printer being part of a special article, but the service contract should be part of the general budget, because that's going to be an ongoing service contract.
Now, Mallory, you know the document I'm referring to, right? Correct?
The memo?
The memorandum. Yeah, the memo was sent out. Do you have that?
I mean, for this year, for the first year, but I think moving forward, that the service contract should be part of the... Part of some type of... In the planning board, having that ongoing. It shouldn't be a special article, because that means we're going to have to vote a special article every year for the service contract of this copier that we're purchasing. I have no problem that we have the copier itself on the...
Yeah, that's true.
But the service plan should not be part of the special.
What is your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, that this goes in there, regular operating budget that costs?
Not the one-time purchase, but the ongoing service plan?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
Because it's going to be every year.
Well, and isn't that kind of like what the Board of Health does, like with the trash and recycling? And they put that into their budget, too? So isn't it that's all the same thing?
Yeah.
Essentially.
Yeah.
Mr. Ryan, how much is that service contract again?
It's full coverage service at $105 per month for $1,260.
And that's part of the...
That covers all parts of labor, includes up to 2,600 square feet per month with monthly black coverage at 4 cents a square foot. Color is at 6 cents per square foot. I calculated the monthly color usage. And then you have to have the supplies also, and that's black ink, the sin ink, the magenta, the yellow.
Yeah.
So...
Okay, wait a minute. Is that service contract part of the 10,500?
Yes.
All right.
Correct.
What I would say for the first year, first of all, it's a special article. You can't put part of it in the budget, because if they don't vote to buy the thing, you've got money in the budget you can't use. So for the first year, I would say, get the package. You've got the package. You've got the special article. If the article is defeated, it eliminates the whole thing. Now, just as has been done with some other things that we've done, next year, the service contract, assuming this passes, next year, you put the service into the planning board budget.
You can do that.
Yeah, that's what the suggestion is.
Correct, correct. I was going to say, do it outright for the first year, and then maybe you will have... Exactly, it's going to come out of the budget anyway, so further on down the road.
Succeeding years is contingent on passage of that article the first year, which is the package.
Mr. Ryan, just to confirm, wouldn't it be awesome that you're actually copying these plans currently at Kinko's alike be offset by this purchase? So wouldn't you typically have already this cost for the service contract covered in your office supplies budget or somewhere on those lines that you're replacing this with?
It's multiple budgets.
You... But see, this is a special piece of equipment that you have to pay for an outside contractor to work on this thing. You know, you can't have, like, WB Mason come in and repair this. You know, that wouldn't be... But I understand your question, Mr. Dingus. You say, yo, I would say going right now is that go with the first year, Mrs. Goulart, say pay for the full package. And then going further is we could take it out of our line budget for office supplies, and TNT later on down the road. That could be done. Is that suitable?
Yes.
It could be...
Well, also...
But, Tim, to Mr. Dingus's point, the money that we're spending out of the planning board budget now to go to Kinko's and do these, I think what he's saying is we need to look at, within the budget, now that we're offsetting it by purchasing this, is there any reduction or savings that can happen in the general budget, correct, Scott?
Exactly.
There won't be a significant reduction in the planning board budget, because you've got, what, three or four other departments involved? So the point would be, if in fact that whole amount passes, 10.5, when you allocate the service contract for that piece of equipment, each department that will use it, whether it's building, assessors, zoning, and planning, should pay a portion of the service contract, because they're all benefiting from it. So to Mr. Dingus's point, if you want to know if there will be a savings by eliminating Staples or Kinko's or whoever you use, you would have to look at the four current budgets, because they're all doing it, according to Mr. Ryan's.
Yeah. All right, we'll do that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Tim. Have a good night.
Do you have any other questions? You too, also. Thank you very much, and everyone, please stay safe, stay healthy.
Good night, Tim.
Nice to see you, everyone. Good night. Good night.
All right, so let's go back up to the top. So we have Chief McGee with the ladder truck and the electric car. So Chief, this is the truck that you talked about the other night, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Does the $60,000 include... Sorry, the $60,000 include to reletter and to move the equipment, everything else you need to do in this one? Or is this just the purchase price?
Yes, it does, Scott. It reletters it, it pump tests it, and every test that I need for it.
Thank you.
So...
Great job on finding the steel of the century there.
Yeah.
I should have asked you this before. I just wanted to ask one question, Mr. Chairman. Chief, is this... This is going to replace one of the current ladder trucks, right? Or are you going to keep... Are you going to have them both?
No, no, no. This will replace the current ladder truck.
Okay, thank you.
So Mallory, I see you have a recommendation out of the ambulance fund. I don't know if we can actually do that, can we?
Ladder trucks? Oh, maybe not. They're not responding like the other engines.
I mean, we can technically, the way that we transfer out of the ambulance fund now, it would technically fund part of the ambulance budget. We try and balance that. But we'll have a discussion on how, how we're going to fund it. We're not going to pass up on the, on the kind of deal that we're going to get here. We, we will figure out, um, what funding mech- mech- mechanism we'll use in order to, uh, to fund that project.
That's awesome.
I just changed my recommendation.
No problem.
Changing these on the fly?
It's the beauty of a Google Doc.
And then, and then Chief, the, the electric car, that's going to be replacing the inspection.
Car four? That'll replace car four, which is a, a used police vehicle that I got from the police department that, uh, is slowly deteriorating. Um, there's some issues with it that it's just going to start to nickel and dime us and, um, I have, I just feel that we could jump on something here. I just also have to put out there too, Mr. Chairman, that I was able to, uh, I was able to secure a seventy-five-hundred-dollar grant from Mass Department of Fire and Public Protection. So that will go towards that purchase also.
So that, so, so it's thirty-seven plus the seventy-five-hundred or thirty-seven less seventy-five-hundred?
Less seventy-five-hundred.
That was my question.
Good. So, 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 um, how do we do that, Mallory? Do, we have to fund the whole thing first and then we get the seventy-five-hundred back?
Generally, that's probably how this grant's set up. Every grant's different, but we'll, so, I, Chris LaVilla, you may want to weigh in. Sometimes we can deficit spend when we have the contract documents. But we only put the thirty-seven thousand in and then the grant, like, we go into the negative, but the grant covers it. But.
All right, we'll figure, we'll, we'll figure that part out before we make that recommendation on, uh, at the, on the final nights on that. Um, so, uh, and I would have to believe that this is outside of SUVs and cars that we bought. This would be the first vehicle purchased for the fire department. And most, usually it's hand-me-downs, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so.
This is also our first electric vehicle.
Yeah. Uh, I wanted to also add, um, Chief McGee, you did an excellent job, uh, with the grant. So kudos, uh, on that. Uh, we also need, and I know this is a conversation for a different, uh, town meeting Warren article, I'm sure, but uh, the building department slash health agent, they also need a car. And so, um, I'm proud to support this article because um, this will allow us to have our first electric vehicle, test out our electrical vehicle chargers. Our mechanic can take a look at the car, become familiar with the batteries. And, um, so when we purchase future electric vehicles in the future, um, you know, we'll have things worked out. So.
I don't know if oil pri- if oil prices stay the way they are, cars may be cheaper than electric again. So.
Yeah, that will change. So we all know.
Uh, Chief, is, kind of like your. Chief, is the car that you are.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Uh, Chief, the car, the car that you're going to replace, is it that old black Crown Vic?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure, Cap.
What brand, uh, vehicle are you buying?
Uh, the Chevy Bolt.
Okay. Is that a full electric or hybrid?
Full electric.
Full electric. Okay.
Which is good because it just stays around town anyway, right? It, it's not a vehicle that goes out of town.
It's, uh, basically, it's just for inspections and occasionally they have to, the duty officer has to, and it's just the end.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. You answered my question.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Chief.
No problem. Thank you.
And now it's to the other chief. Chief McDonald.
Hello. How we doing?
Good, good. I see the Patriots open up with the Dolphins, Chief.
Yeah, they do. They open up with the Dolphins and they play out in Miami in December.
Perfect. Uh, as, uh, as an aside, I'll throw this one out. I heard this one today, Chief, that the Dolphins have retrofitted the stadium and they're all set for, um, fans to come to the games. It's limited to fifteen thousand, but they're not sure if they can find fifteen thousand Dolphin fans.
They're going to sell out this year.
Yeah. So you can tell Mike he can probably get a ticket to fly down. So, so Chief, you have, you have the, the two requests, the radar trailer. We have one currently, correct?
We do have, uh, one right now. Um, we've had it for a number of years. It's still, it's still working condition. Uh, reason I want another one is, um, yeah, because with this one trailer, we put it somewhere for a couple of days. Then we're going to move it to another location. If I have another one, I can have one down in the north end, one in the south end, rotate them on different places.
Do you find that they're effective?
Uh, they are only when, I mean, you can leave them there for a couple of days. And after that, I, I think people realize that, uh, you know, they're there. But what we do is, and I tell the patrols, you put the trail out there a couple of days. After it's out there a couple of days, get down there, stop monitoring traffic with radar in the cruiser. That way, um, it, it works.
Okay. All right. And then the second request is for two cruisers. And I know we've been committed to one every year for the last few years, and I know we're committed to that. I have a question on the cost of the cruisers has significantly jumped over the last two years. What, what, what is the reason for that? Why has it gotten so? Outfit cruisers for thirty-four to forty thousand dollars. Now we're up to sixty thousand dollars a cruiser.
They, they, they just, they've jumped up at it. Like they've gone up. And my, here's my reason why, Ed, why I'm, I'm asking for, for two. And I know the finance committee, we have agreed to get, give the police department one every year. Um, and the reason for the second one is this pa- this past year, um, one of the cruisers got totaled, okay? And we lost that. And that's why I'm going for an, an, an additional one. Um, right now I have six cruisers that are in line. There's, there's three of them right now that have over a hundred thousand miles. One's got one twenty-five, one's got one forty-six, and another one's got one thirty-three. So, uh, what I'm doing is asking for that additional one for this year due to we lost, lost that one this past year. Um, I'm not looking to every year, this, for some, this year, you know, I, another one for that, that we lost.
So, but what did, didn't we do something? So how many cruisers did we get this year?
One.
One.
We also got a detective's car, right?
To get a second vehicle? Oh, God, I'm sorry, Robert.
I said, didn't, wasn't the second one for a detective's car?
Yeah, it was, uh, Bob, yep.
All right. So we did get two ve- two, we did add an additional vehicle to the police fleet this year, over and above.
Not, not being a, it wasn't a mock car, it was a detective car.
Yeah.
Chief?
Yes.
Uh, I just had a quick question. So, uh, as the vehicles age and they go above a hundred thousand and then you start thinking about replacing them, uh, are you still able, uh, if another department needs them, I think because they're new enough, they're probably fuel efficient. Do you still, uh, allow other apartment, departments to have those cars? Do you still transfer them?
Do you, like departments, Dr. Z, you're talking about, uh, are the police departments or you talking about for the town?
Like other town departments, I'm sorry.
No, we, I, we wouldn't give them to another town.
No, I mean, are, are you still able to transfer those aging cruisers that you have to other town departments here in Dayton?
Our town.
We, yeah, we, uh, I'm saying, yeah, I'll, yes, we've, we've done that in the past. We've given a number of, uh, cars down to the fire department. That, um, that white one that the, uh, board of health, uh, is using, that was a police department of vehicle also.
Yeah.
We're also not able to be as flexible anymore with that since the green community binds us, that we have to have all of our, um, police and fire and highway are exempt, but so they can trade within themselves. But as far as passing it to like inspectional services or other departments, they have to meet two thousand and ten efficiency standards. Some of these don't, some of these older ones don't.
May I ask a question about that, just a quick follow-up?
Yeah, of course.
But if, but if what we're, and this is for whoever can answer it, but if what we're talking about is a, I don't know, twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen Ford Taurus, why is that not, uh, efficient enough or sufficient for like a, uh, the health agent or the, the car that the building inspector would share with the health agent?
I thought we were talking about, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about the Crown Vics and they're older than that.
No, no, those are, those are.
They're out, but you can.
So I, I have a question about the, the, what, so vehicles now last longer and mileage is not always the, the one thing that you look at. On a police vehicle, what does a hundred thousand miles look like versus, because now cars are built to go a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand miles. What does a hundred thousand miles mean on a police cruiser versus when, when I think a car can go a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand miles? I see Kevin shaking his head. I'm sure he has some input to that.
It's engine hours, it's not miles.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Lot of idle time, lot of hours.
Yeah, these guys are going on emergency calls too. Uh, with a car that's got a hundred thousand miles is, uh, uh, I, I don't think that's good. I mean.
All right. I'm, I'm asking because I'm naive to it.
Especially, especially the two that, uh, one's one hundred and forty-six thousand miles. And these guys are going on emergency calls with that vehicle. And then the other one's a hundred and thirty-three thousand, they're going on emergency calls with that. That, that, I think that's
Chief, Chief, how, how, how old are those vehicles? What are the, what are years of those two vehicles?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me, Ed. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I have, I have the mark, but I don't have the years right in front of me, Ed.
Chief, I'm curious to know that too, and also the model and make, just because we will eventually need a car for the, uh, the building inspector, and I believe the health agent also uses it. So I'm just curious to see what, what, what you need to have traded out and upgraded.
Can I, can I add something?
Sure, Cap.
Um, something I consider at looking at too, you know, you're looking at that, but what you're going to find is as, as a fleet ages, uh, just like the fleet I manage right now with over two hundred vehicles on it, um, as they start to get about five years old and they're over that hundred thousand, my, my vehicles are running around five thousand hours or better. Uh, what we're finding is that the cost to maintain the vehicle is what starts to get prohibitive.
Yeah.
So I think if you had, you, you would, if you had a track of how much you're spending per vehicle after five years or after three years, after it runs out of factory warranty, it's going to give you a better indication when you should be getting rid of that. And we found our mark was around five and a half, six years, uh, we have to start turning our fleet. Only because, um, we're finding that vehicles that are worth, you know, twenty thousand, we've spent forty thousand on to repair. So you're going to get to that point.
That's something the town administrator is going to start tracking. I know the town hasn't implemented its asset tracking, uh, system yet, but I think that is something that she has expressed to me at least, we should be tracking, and I agree with that.
Exactly. With me, you're going to have to have some type of tracker. If you don't, even the time spent by whomever the town technician is or and, and stuff like that, parts of the purchase, uh, for that unit, uh, it has to be analyzed and as an individual entity to get a good track of how much you're spending per car. And when the breakpoint is that you should be getting rid of those.
Okay.
That's what it's about, a service. Absolutely. We're working on that. Um, we're working on it. It got interrupted through COVID, but Chris LaVilla and myself have done some research on asset tracking. And I also sat with the chief and Sergeant Sean Cronin through the IMC software where they can track all town vehicles. So I completely agree with you and we're trying to roll that out. A little distracted right now.
Okay.
Some, some of these cars.
So Chief, we're, we're, we're committed to that first vehicle. We'll figure out a way to, um, to work through on the, on the second vehicle, on, uh, how we can, uh, come up with some funding for that.
Okay. Just, just another thought too. These cars don't sit, they go twenty-four, seven. So some of these cars are going twenty-four hours. They don't even sit for eight hours. Some of them are going, there's a rotation. Certain guys in the department each have their, this, their own car, but a lot of them, three of them will drive the same car. So this car is going twenty-four hours. It's not, it's not sitting.
Yeah.
It doesn't sit for eight hours, then go out again. It, it's going, it's going twenty-four, seven.
Yeah, understood. And then it, hey, um, Chris, can you just pull what our actual spend for the car was that we purchased last year? Not the, not the unmarked, but the cruiser?
Cruiser, sure.
We can compare cost of what it cost us last year to what it's costing us for the newer vehicles this year?
Absolutely.
So we can get a track record on that too. All right. Thanks, Chief.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then, uh, Highway Tom, Tom, you still here with us? Are you surviving? I saw you had a different picture tonight. Tom, you're on mute. If you're still there, Mr. Ferry?
Yeah, yeah.
He's here. I can hear him.
Uh, hi, Tom.
Good evening.
So, Tom, I think you had the same request last year for the road sweeper.
Yes.
Is, is, is there any way to do a lease purchase program on, on this product?
Yes, it should have been, uh, with the request. It should have followed through with it.
So, Mallory, do you, so.
That document, they're at my office. They're with Karen. Sorry about that.
Okay. So we'll talk more about that one when it's, when it's finalized. Do you know what the yearly cost is? And what, and how many years we can spread it over? I mean, I'd like to make a full purchase if, if it saves us a lot of money, but if it's not that much different, I think at this point, based on what we know, we may have to look at, uh, spreading this one over a five-year or a five-year lease purchase type of thing.
Mr. Chi- oh, sorry. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, typically road sweeper, that would probably be the minimum lease term would be a five-year lease term.
Yep.
I wouldn't see, I couldn't see anybody accelerating it more than that. Um, it's unlikely that any of your manufacturers are going to go beyond the five years just because of the nature of the year.
I agree. That's why I just want to see what it's going to cost us if we did it as a five-year lease.
If I may add some additional, uh, I worked for the town of Foxborough last spring and they actually did, they did exactly what you're contemplating right now. They went and leased a sweeper. Uh, annual cost was about fifty-five thousand dollars a year.
All right. So let's take a look at that. If we can get that information for Tuesday night.
Was that a purchase or just a lease?
Yes.
Yeah, was that a lease to purchase?
That was a lease to purchase, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to see what, what, how much more it's going to cost us and is it worth it doing it that way? Or do we just, we tap into, um, capital stabilization and make the purchase?
Okay.
Hey, Tom, is this strictly a sweeper or does it have the vacuum option?
No, this is a mechanical sweeper.
Okay.
Any, any questions on that from anybody?
Yeah, hey, Tom.
Yes.
Go ahead, Cap.
What, what brand sweeper is that?
The Elgin, the same one we have now, just a newer.
An Elgin?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Any other question, any other questions on that?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank Tom for being patient on this one. Thank you.
We're, hey, Tom, we're closer than we were last year.
We're almost there, Tom.
Um, and then, is, this is just a transfer for the mower? For where's, where are we transferring from?
Article sixteen of special town meeting, um, of October twenty-eighth because Tom is so frugal. He got a better deal than anticipated. There's money left over to buy this as well.
Okay. Perfect, perfect.
Yes.
And, uh, since, since you're here, we have the Brick Street Culvert Grant match. So does someone want to fill us in on that? Mallory or Tom?
That's, Tom, if you want, I can take it.
Yeah, you, you're also with the mower, yes.
Yeah. So, uh, Tom and I have been working on the Brick Street Culvert replacement project for quite some time. We got a grant for engineering and design work that, um, got us up to the shovel-ready part. We finalized permitting and easements. We got a ninety-six thousand dollar grant, ninety-two thousand dollar grant from DER. And we need to finish this project or basically everything that we worked for will need to be tweaked because it will be outdated. So Tom and I worked with the Nature Conservancy to go after federal grant funds. And we requested for four hundred dollars, four hundred. And we requested for four hundred dollars, four hundred thousand dollars, and then we'll have to provide a match. The match cannot be federal funds, so the idea is to go apply to DER again for construction funds. We did. This is a backup, but it's a very important backup for us to have in the bank, because if our grant applications don't work out. It's a house of cards and it will fall. So I know that this is not a great time. I understand. We've been working on this for two years. We look at it as a shovel ready project that can put people to work and and kickstart our own local economy. And we build, I build it as such in the grant application for DER, so I'm hoping that will get us some brownie points with them. They're also very familiar with the project, and we're trying to be a good little locality and be a training site, so we tried to sell ourselves as how we could be a partner as well. But this is a backup. I could probably go down a little bit to like a hundred fifty, but I know that's not giving you much. I apologize.
So so is this, we're technically just setting this money aside from, if we say capital stabilization. We're setting it aside in anticipation of getting the grant, and if we don't get the grant, we will spend this to continue with the project.
Yeah.
If we get the grant, will we still have to spend this?
If we get the grant, no.
Okay.
Or maybe they're not this many dollars, maybe just a few, as costs rise, right? We, now with everything, costs are gonna go higher than anticipated. We built in a pretty good contingency to take care of that. But I would rather be safe than sorry. And another thing to know, I know Brick Street doesn't have a lot of residents. But it's it's very much necessary to fix because it serves as the center street detour. And if we don't have a detour for when the Center Street Bridge goes down, which it will, it will eventually. We have a very large problem on our hands. So this is a critical piece of the puzzle. Doesn't look like it at first, but it it really is.
So does, what's the expiration date of?
Of the easements and such, about two years. So by the time we get all this, it'll be about eighteen months. I know I'm putting you in a possible situation.
No, no, I mean, I anticipate that we'll get the grant and we won't end up spending all of it and it will revert back. And it's good that we have the kind of cash we have in our stabilization accounts that we would have the ability to do this. I guess, I I take it as a good financial management strategy to do this, if it's something that's that necessary. I don't know how anyone else feels. I mean, I think it's a good quality thing to do. From a planning standpoint, and if we can, if we can get that, those dollars, it'd be great, so.
It's listed in our MVP and our Hazard Mitigation Plan, which helps us with our grant points, so I'm I'm pretty confident, but only time will tell.
Uh, Tom, you keep it lively.
Where do you find me?
That that's a good example of social distancing.
Good one, Tom.
This culvert, the Brick Street culvert, we're finding, I I know it sounds like it's just a culvert, but it also involves raising the road, so it's quite a bit of. Do this. That's why we are stretching it out so much.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add on to that?
No, I just wanted to follow up what the town administrator said. Just in speaking to different state stakeholders who do a lot of these grants, they've told me that. Finishing a project with grant money begets the next round of grant monies. It makes you more likely to get grant money, so I just want everyone to keep that in mind. I'm not saying, you know, yes, Finance Committee, you have to recommend this, but it is a consideration to make in terms of our likelihood to get the next round of grant funds. And right now, I just want everyone to remember, grants are gonna be extremely important in a very difficult economy, so any little bit will help.
Anyone have any questions on that? Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Mallory.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, so. That that brings us to the end of our reviews, and I know we have on here general budget review and recommendations, but I'm going to recommend that we. Try and complete all of that on Tuesday night.
What about Town Hall renovations?
Oh, did I miss? Oh, I missed one. Town Hall renovations.
Can I give you my elevator pitch on this one, Ed?
Sure.
Mallory can follow up with whatever she wants. So this project was always a two step project. With the renovation and restoration of Old Town Hall, because people were literally almost on top of one another. They still actually are in that. Main hub in the Clerks Treasurer's Office. So that project got done. We now need to renovate the interior of Town Hall, so to clear up that congestion. Jim has finished phase one of the downstairs, which was the old zoning board office. I know he's working right now on. Assisting the Cable Committee on renovating their studio, so they'll be able to do better quality productions with some newer equipment there. But again, this is to finish some renovations downstairs. It would be. An office, so you know the hallway downstairs, there would be doors off of there, which would be an office for the Sewer Commission, and then a. Shared office for planning zoning. The accountant will move to where the Planning Board Office currently is. And then this would also free up some monies to do something upstairs as well, but this will greatly help with the congestion. And I I just want everyone to remember, I know a hundred sixty five thousand dollars is a lot of money. But we spent close to that or less than that on Old Town Hall. We got a gorgeous building that everybody's proud of. Right now, we're in the middle of a pandemic. It is really concerning to me to have people be on top of each other like they are at Town Hall. So I just want everyone to be mindful of that. I know it's a big price tag, but to have our employees and the public come in, be safe. I think it's a small price to pay right now.
So I will just ask if we can see somewhat of a breakdown of what we're spending a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars on. A little deeper breakdown than than just a string. I I have no problem with.
He has a plan.
Yeah.
We can get that too, for sure.
We can see some, see some of the plan and some of the backup to it, because maybe some of it is, hey. Let's ask what's gonna be done in the first half of the year and what's gonna be done in the second half, so maybe look at free cash to backfill it a little bit.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And then just have enough to get going, Mr. Chairman, in the first half of the school year. Yep, we can get that to you.
All right, okay, okay. Yeah, I just, I don't think anybody disagrees that we need to do, we we have been bulging at the seams in in the buildings.
Yeah, if it doesn't need to be all done at once, I, I mean, that point is well taken. We definitely get those descriptions.
But as we know, if we don't plan for it, something else always comes up, so.
Yeah, understood.
We just want to be mindful of it. Anybody want to add anything to that? All right, now I'll go back to what I was saying. But thank everybody for another marathon, another marathon night. We're plowing through it. I know it gets a little tedious sometimes, and even I I struggle with it myself. But we'll, I think we should be able to wrap up in in. Relatively quickly saying on on Tuesday night, get to a number. I would like to put that two hundred thousand number, Chris, in the. In the in the document sheet and go start utilizing two hundred, especially when I think what you're gonna look at the five year trend has been significantly higher than that. We've been pretty good, even in down times. We, the the town has always done pretty good in revenues. And and because we take that conservative approach to it, yes, our free cash level will go down as we lose revenues. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. We do bank on a lot of excess revenues to create our free cash balance, so. I hope to to, after Tuesday night, that we're not sitting here asking the department heads to make a ten percent reduction. Because we just can't get to the levy limit based on where we're at, but I think we'll have some some. Riveting discussions about that on Tuesday night when we when we sit and go through the recommendations, so. Does that, I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to add. I know it's been, it's been a long night.
No, good job, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. We'll, we'll talk to you. I'll give you an update from. Mallory and I's little conference call with the school department. After tomorrow, I'll send a quick note out.
Sounds good.
Oh, yeah, motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, someone make the motion.
Motion, make a motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor? All opposed, I have it. Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.